Okay. It looks like everybody is hooked up. Good afternoon. It is March 22nd, excuse me, try again, it's March 23rd, 2022, just after 1:00 PM. I'm Alan Lilly, Presiding Hearing Officer of the State Water Resources Control Board's Administrative Hearings Office. And this is a continuation of the hearing on prosecution team's draft cease and desist order against Blue Triton Brands Inc., which I refer to as Blue Triton. And I did have one preliminary matter that I forgot to cover this morning, and that concerns the revised version of Exhibit BTB 6. And I do have a request to the Blue Triton attorneys and, as necessary, Mr. Nichols when we have a break. The redline version ends up, there's just enough text that at page 33, it adds a whole new page, and then after that, the page numbers all become one higher on the redline than on the original. So if one of you, or if you can work and maybe send a request, I'll pause just a minute after I say this to whoever can handle that. If somebody can just prepare and accept all changes version of BTB 6, and just check and make sure that that with accepting changes, that eliminates that big blank on page 33, it was just like three lines of text, I mean, one line of text with a few words. And label that and make a PDF of that and label it Exhibit BTB 6 Revised, and then upload it to the AHO FTP folder in the Blue Triton Exhibits. And then we will save that as well. We'll leave the other two in just so the record is clear, but then for a few, as soon as we get that up for cross-examination questions and certainly for citations, we can cite to that and it'll have the corrected text and the correct page numbers. And just for reference, the paragraph numbers have never changed, so our references to paragraphs have been accurate all along. And I apologize for not realizing that yesterday. I thought the redline would be fine, but that jump in the page numbers creates a little bit of confusion. So Ms. Grady or Mr. Sanders, can you take care of that, please?
Sure. Actually, it should have already been done because what we had uploaded yesterday was a corrected version with that, with those changes. It was just the redline that we had never intended to be used as the exhibit was chosen by the AHO's office. So those should have already been uploaded yesterday to the AHO website.
All right, so let me check. I'm just checking our upload page now. Oh, here we are, Revised BTB 6. I might be able to do this. Watch out, they don't usually let me do things like this because I can get into trouble. Let me just see if I can do that. Close tabs. Revised BTB, so Mr. Sanders, what's called Revised BTB 6, which was uploaded yesterday morning, should be the one we want?
Yes, it should be.
Okay, well, I'm gonna copy, so if I blow it, we won't lose it here. But if I just do it right now, then that'll be great. Then we can use it for cross-examination purposes. This is always dangerous when I do this. This is usually why my staff doesn't let me do this. But I think I can pull this one off. Paste. Okay, and I'm gonna just change the label. You had it called Revised BTB 6. I'm gonna call it BTB 6 Revised. That way it'll sort in the right place alphabetically. Okay, it should be there. It looks like it is there. So Ms. Mullen, when we ask for people to put, when we ask you to put up BTB 6, use the BTB 6 Revised file, which now is posted to the right, the AHO folder with Blue Triton's Exhibits. So thank you, Mr. Sanders. And as I say, I already said what I did, didn't realize I was gonna have that page jump, but thank you for taking care of that. All right, that's good. Now we won't have that page jump issue. So with that, Ms. Doty, we covered a lot in the way of legal rulings this morning. Have you now assembled the remaining cross-examination questions you would like to ask?
I have.
And I am gonna ask now for a time estimate. How long is your time estimate now?
30 minutes.
Okay, and I don't wanna make you talk fast because the court reporter gets into trouble, but I really am gonna try to limit you to 30 minutes because you did have a lot of time yesterday, and I think it's important for you to be efficient and wrap this up. So it's 1:08, go ahead and get started with your cross-examination of Mr. Nichols. And Mr. Nichols, a reminder, you still are under oath. And we will be glad to post any exhibits on the screen that you want us to.
Okay. Mr. Nichols, the stable isotope analysis that you performed, did you perform that according to any published protocol?
With regards to the analysis that are performed, what we did is we collected samples and we submitted those to the laboratory, and we plotted the laboratory data on that, on that diagram. Beyond that, we reviewed the distribution of those samples. And we didn't reference a published protocol for review or analysis of those data beyond the laboratory work.
What about the collection of those data? Did you use any published protocol for your method that you used to collect the data?
There isn't a published protocol for the type of data that we collected.
So is the entirety of the description of your methodology for data collection in the, in BTB 7?
I don't recall exactly the detail that we went into on data collection. If you'd like, we could pull up the document and look at it.
Our time is limited, so we won't do that now. How many data, how many samples were collected for each data point on the graph?
Each data point represents one sample.
And did you exclude any samples that were collected for any reason?
Not to my recollection.
Sorry, okay. What sort of bottles did you use to collect the samples?
Bottles that were provided by the laboratory.
And what laboratory did you use?
The University of Arizona.
And is that, so that was an academic lab?
It's a laboratory that's run by the university. They do commercial, commercial isotope analyses.
Okay, so you were a commercial client?
Yes.
Okay. And did you run quality assurance, quality control, or did the lab do that on the samples?
The laboratory did.
And did you receive a QA QC report?
I don't recall how they annotated their QA QC procedures in the lab reports we received, but we did receive laboratory reports from, from University of Arizona.
And those lab reports are not in evidence, is that correct?
Correct.
And did you have chain of custody reports?
Yes, I believe so.
And are those in evidence?
No.
Okay. Regarding the shut-in test, if we could go to BTB 7, page 25, please?
And we'll assume you're going by PDF page numbers?
Yes, aye.
As I recall, there are eight pages different than the numbers at the bottom. No, seven pages different. So PDF 25, which is text page 18. Go ahead with your question.
Sorry, my screen is doing something. Okay. So, Mr. Nichols, did you follow any published protocol or methodology in collecting your samples for the shut-in test?
We didn't, we didn't collect samples for the shut-in test.
Sorry, did you follow any published protocol or method in conducting your shut-in test?
I don't know of a published protocol for conducting this type of test.
Okay, so is the entirety of the methodology you followed included in BTB 7?
The procedure that we use for the shut-in test is described in this section, 5.2.2.
All right, and this is the entirety of the description that's in evidence for your methodology?
Yes, there is specific information regarding each shut-in test associated with the text describing each test.
And how was the timeframe for each test determined?
The timeframe was determined by a review of the data as they were, as they were collected. We tested to equilibrium and then we remained, we left the boreholes shut in for a period beyond that to understand what happened once the water level stopped rising.
And how did you determine that you had allowed sufficient time to observe new equilibrium between the springs and the boreholes?
When the water level stopped rising.
Okay, you testified, I believe, the other day, correct me if I mischaracterize it, that you let it stay shut in a little bit longer after reaching equilibrium, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so how did you determine how much longer to allow it to remain shut in?
The period following equilibrium was, was really based on discussions with the Forest Service, for instance. I think if we, if we were to scroll down the document, we'll see that one of the tests extended for a period of seven months. And in particular, that was because the Forest Service had questions and they were interested in what would happen over a longer shut-in period. And so that, and so the shut-in period was determined based on observation of equilibrium, but then it extended longer based on conversations with the Forest Service and potential changes that might, hydraulic changes that might occur after that.
So what was?
And Mr. Nichols, speed warning, you're going a little too fast. Please slow down a little.
Understood.
Right, and it's very, it's clear, but just so the court reporter can get it all down. Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
So you, is it fair to say that, sorry, scratch that. So what experimental design parameter did you use to determine when to shut it in? Was there a parameter that you used?
Can you explain what you mean by experimental design parameter?
Well, you said there was a conversation with the Forest Service. Did you arrive upon some sort of protocol, some sort of parameter that you would use to end, that once reached, you would end the shut-in test?
Yes.
What was that?
In particular, we submitted a data collection plan that is attached to the, to the adaptive management plan. And that document stated that the minimum period after equilibration would be two weeks of remaining shut-in.
And did you follow that protocol consistently?
We extended beyond that time period every time.
Beyond the two weeks?
Yes.
And how did you determine then how much longer to go?
As I explained previously in conversation with the Forest Service with regards to conditions observed during shut-in.
Okay, and did you rely upon a published method for calculating the hydraulic conductivity as part of that shut-in test and evaluation?
We didn't calculate hydraulic conductivity from the shut-in tests.
Did you rely upon a published method for calculating hydraulic conductivity generally?
The hydraulic conductivities that we calculated were based on the tunnel drain-down tests. And there isn't a published method for calculating hydraulic conductivity from tunnel drain-down.
So did you, did you describe that method that you used anywhere in BTB 7 or elsewhere in evidence?
I'd have to, I'd have to review the document to be certain how we described it, but it is described everywhere.
Can you review the document and tell me where it is, please?
So, and excuse me, Ms. Doty, but Mr. Nichols, your report uses the term, it's displayed right here in Section 5.3, hydraulic connection. Is that the same, Ms. Doty's using the term hydraulic conduct, connectivity, are those basically the same terms here?
I'm using the term hydraulic conductivity.
Okay, conductivity, that's, so are those, in your understanding, Mr. Nichols, when you're answering these questions, are those two terms the same?
As, as I understand her to be asking a question regarding hydraulic conductivity, that is different than hydraulic connection.
Okay, that's what I was concerned about. So, Ms. Doty, you might, this part of the report uses the term hydraulic connection. So if you're, if you're asking about hydraulic conductivity, I think you have to explain where in the report he has that term and why you're using that term different than hydraulic connection.
So he's testified that they did derive a hydraulic conductivity from their experiments. I'm asking him where the protocol is for that, so I can't direct him, I'm asking him to direct me.
Okay, well, then I'm confused, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Nichols, does your report BTB 7 talk anywhere about hydraulic conductivity?
Yes.
Where, where is that, just so I can be on the right page?
I'm looking at Section 6.2.4.
All right, what's? 6.2.4, you said?
Yes.
Okay, so, Ms. Doty, if you're gonna ask him about hydraulic conductivity, I think we should have up that page, which I think is PDF page 39. And it might go on to page 40.
Sure, I mean, I can direct him to the very short paragraph that's the second to last in that section, which is on page BTB 740, and if, is that, I mean, it says generally that hydraulic conductivity was calculated based on what it area, but it doesn't describe how that was done, so.
Okay, so please, Ms. Mullen, please go to the next page. All right, and I think, Ms. Doty, are you asking about the third paragraph here that begins hydraulic conductivity values?
I am.
Okay, so please ask your, I mean, just, I'm not trying to be difficult here, but for me to follow this, I need to have the text. So go ahead and ask your question with this text up in front of us, and please repeat your question.
Mr. Nichols, is there any published method for conduct, for calculating hydraulic conductivity that you know about?
Yes.
Did you rely upon a published method for calculating hydraulic conductivity when you were performing these tests?
As I stated previously, there isn't a method for calculating hydraulic conductivity or tunnel drain-down test.
So is this paragraph that we just referenced that commences with hydraulic conductivity the totality of your description of your methodology, methodology used here?
This describes how we calculated it, yes.
Okay, is there anything you wish to add so that this could be reproducible by someone else, or do you think that's sufficient?
It's sufficient.
Okay. How did you estimate the hydraulic gradient?
As stated in the sentence there, it's the difference between high head and low head conditions at boreholes 1, 1A, and 8.
Can you provide a reference whereby air bounds of estimation can be evaluated against a published protocol?
There isn't a published protocol for this type of analysis.
You reference the primary permeability, I believe, on BTB 39. Can you state whether that's vertical or horizontal?
Wait, let's, let's get the page. What, I don't think, I think you mean BTB 7 page?
Yes, I do, sorry, page 39.
Okay, so, and that's PDF page 39, I think that's one page up. Thank you, Ms. Mullen. All right, which paragraph are you looking at here?
Actually, I believe it's earlier in the report. Okay, if we could go to BTB 7, page 22.
Okay. Let's do that. We have that up, it's text page 15, PDF page 22, please go ahead.
Okay, if you could just review that for a second, Mr. Nichols, to re-familiarize yourself with this page. My question for you is, is the primary permeability vertical or horizontal?
I, I didn't see the word or the phrase primary permeability.
So you're discussing the permeability of the area, and I'm assuming these questions were given to me by the expert, primary would be, I mean, my guess is.
Let's, let's, I think I can help you out, Ms. Doty. I think you need to just ask a final foundational question. Ask him, is he familiar with the term primary permeability?
Are you familiar with that term?
Could you define it for me?
I'm gonna, can I object?
If she's asking. Wait, wait.
I don't have a question, Alan.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's stop for a minute here. Mr. Nichols, the question is, are you familiar with the term primary permeability? Believe, trust me, you're gonna know a lot more about it than any of the rest of us. So either you are or you aren't, so please say yes or no.
I think I might understand the concept that Ms. Doty's pursuing. In particular, in the second, second line from the bottom of the first paragraph, we talk about substantial secondary porosity and permeability as a result of widespread fracturing. I assume she's looking for the corollary to the secondary porosity and permeability, is that? And I'm not sure if I've grasped the intent of the question with that.
Okay, well, let's, let's, let's go off the assumption, unless Ms. Doty tells me otherwise, that primary porosity and permeability is something that is, basically leads secondary, as you've discussed it here. So with that, Ms. Doty, can you ask your question?
So in the context of what you're discussing in this paragraph here at BTB 7, page 22, is the primary permeability vertical or horizontal?
Primary permeability, as I understand the use of the phrase, as we discussed a moment ago, is, speaks to the capacity of the unfractured rock to transmit water. And that permeability or porosity would be in both directions, that would be a value that's applied horizontally or vertically. Secondary porosity is when that intact rock is broken and creates additional porosity and permeability, which again is also both vertical and horizontal.
If you could, please put up BTB 6, paragraph 27.
Right, and we're gonna use BTB Revised, BTB 6 Revised, so paragraph 27, I think it's.
I'm sorry, page 27, paragraph 88.
Page 27, paragraph 88. And Ms. Mullen will scroll down and make it bigger so we can read it.
You could just refresh your recollection of that paragraph.
I've read it.
Okay, is there a published protocol you relied upon to develop this sampling method that's described here?
There isn't a published protocol for this type of testing.
Okay, and did you describe somewhere the protocol that you relied upon to conduct this testing?
As I described earlier, we did have a hydrologic data collection plan that was submitted to the Forest Service that was appended to the adaptive management plan.
And is that in evidence?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, and what time of day were the measurements taken?
You can see from the text that they were taken six times a day on even spacing, so that means every four hours.
Okay, and is that, this, this paragraph refers to boreholes 1, 1A, and 8? Was the same protocol used for boreholes 10 and 12?
Yes.
And, I'm sorry, yes. If we could go to, sorry, one moment.
Excuse me, I'm gonna interrupt, and don't worry, Ms. Doty, I won't call this against your time, but Mr. Nichols, while we're on this page, at line 18, I see the term stilling well. Can you just tell me, what's the difference between a stilling well and a piezometer?
Certainly, a piezometer is, is, as we, as I described yesterday, a device for measuring water level in the ground. And it would be driven into the ground to the point where it detects to where it has access to water. What we did is we, we drove a piezometer also into the spring pool, which was perforated at the elevation of the spring pool, so that we could use the, the, the body of the piezometer as a stilling well. And what a stilling well does is it calms the water within the, within the stilling well, so that we can get more consistent data collection with the, with the instrument.
So it's basically measuring the surface water elevation of the pool?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Ms. Doty, you may proceed.
If you put up BTB 7, please, at page 103.
Okay, BTB 7, PDF page 103.
Okay.
And if you can just scroll down, Ms. Mullen, I just wanna see which figure this is. Okay, so, Ms. Doty, I think we have a problem here because we have not, we have ruled we are not going to admit this into evidence because this is a depiction of the model.
I'll withdraw the question.
I think we have to withdraw the question. Thank you.
If we could put up BTB 9, please? And then go to page 8.
All right, we have Exhibit BTB 9, page 8 on the screen.
Mr. Nichols, on that final bullet point, you draw a conclusion regarding the location, the underlying geographic, or geology for boreholes 10, 11, and 12. Did you base that solely upon a review of this map?
No, it's also based on a review of the, of the well completion records for, for those boreholes.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Nichols, you started working for BTB's predecessor in what year?
2001.
Okay, and between, and during that time, were you familiar generally with the operation of the facility?
I'll say that my responsibilities haven't ever touched on, on how the pipeline was operated or storage facilities or anything like that.
Okay, do you know where along the pipeline before 2016, water was turned out?
And Ms. Mullen, you And Ms. Mullin, you may take down this exhibit. Thank you.
Um, I, I don't know specifically, uh, turnout locations before two thousand and sixteen.
Are you familiar with the pipe infrastructure?
Generally, yes.
Do you know where water was capable of being turned out prior to two thousand and sixteen?
I, I don't, um, in, in any level of detail. I, I know that there's a number of pressure control valves on the pipeline, and I don't know if those can be used to turn out water or not.
Do you know where the, uh, collection silos are?
Objection, we're, objection, we're going beyond the scope of the, the rebuttal testimony. I just got a proper, this is gonna be allowed? How far we're going?
I'm, I'm going to allow some. Uh, we have this strange rule in government code eleven-five-one-three B that allows Cross X to go beyond the scope of direct. Um, so, at, at least as long as it's relevant, I'm going to allow it, 'cause I think it's within the scope of that rule. So, Ms. Doty, you may proceed, and of course, Mr. Nichols, you, you know, if you don't know, you say you don't know, but if it's within your knowledge, then you can answer the question. So go ahead and repeat the question, Ms. Doty.
Do you know where the collection silos are?
Uh, I, I, I don't know them by the name of collection silos, but the, but the water silos, um, yes, I do know where they're located.
Okay, do you know what the distance is between those silos in East Twin Creek?
No, I don't.
Do you know if there's any infrastructure between the silos and, and, and East Twin Creek that would allow water to be turned out, sorry, prior to two thousand and sixteen, that would have allowed water to be turned out into East Twin Creek?
I, I don't specifically know.
Okay. You don't specifically know, you haven't observed the infrastructure at that end?
Um, much of the pipeline on that part of the property, I believe, is underground, and I don't know, I, I don't know frankly where it goes, or if there's vaults, or valves, or things between those locations.
Okay, are you familiar at all with how much water that was collected was ultimately loaded onto trucks?
I'm, I'm not.
Do you know how much water the Forest Service required to be turned out recently?
Uh, I don't, uh, I don't know that there was a specific volume.
Were you part of the process that, um, resulted in water being turned out at ten, eleven, twelve?
I, I didn't, uh, participate in any of the engineering or construction, or, or any of those parts of the project.
Did you participate in turning the water out in any way?
No.
So are you familiar with how much water was turned, I mean, did your, um, observation and experimentation over the last several years, did you take into consideration the fact that the Forest Service was requiring water to be turned out along the pipeline from time to time?
Um, I, I don't know that the Forest Service had a, a timeframe requirement for turnouts, or a volume requirement for, for turnout. Um, and certainly, we conducted testing through the period when that was installed. Um, I don't, uh, but don't have anything else to contribute to that.
So when you were sampling flow in the creek, you didn't take into account that the Forest Service was requiring water to be turned out from time to time?
Again, I don't know of a schedule that the Forest Service required water to be turned out. Um, but certainly, we, we monitored flow in the creek, um, and I, I would have to look at, uh, I have to, I have to pause myself, 'cause I'm not exactly certain when the, when that turnout came online, and its relationship to, let's say, the maps shown in Attachment Three. I believe that the turnout came online after, after, uh, those maps were completed in May of two thousand and twenty-one. But that's a question probably better for others.
I'm gonna turn to discussion of Row.
Okay, so we'll just see where we are, Ms. Doty. Um, is this your last area of questioning?
Um, aside from just a, a couple of small random questions that I mentioned I had yesterday.
All right, so how long do you think you will be asking questions about the Row reports?
Five to seven minutes?
Okay, go ahead, and I will say, your questions are short and to the point, and I appreciate that, so keep up the good work.
Would you say, uh, sorry, could you put up SOS, um, I'm sorry, never mind, scratch that. Uh, would you say that the source of Strawberry Creek is springs that issue from the side of Strawberry Peak?
Um, I don't know that that's how I would, I would describe that.
Would you say that that's an inaccurate statement?
I, I don't have a framework to say whether Mr. Rowe was accurate or inaccurate with that statement.
Well, I'm not asking if Mr. Rowe is accurate and inaccurate. I'm asking you, if, when I make this statement, it's an accurate or inaccurate statement. Would you say that the source of Strawberry Creek is the springs that issue from the side of Strawberry Peak?
Well, certainly, there's, there's a number of, of different sources of water that, that constitute flow in Strawberry Creek, and they're not all springs on the side of Strawberry Peak. For instance, there's areas of gaining flow during periods of the year in the area below ten, eleven, twelve, that contribute flow to Strawberry Creek. So, i- in, in, in a very general sense, um, I understand what Mr. Rowe was saying, but, but certainly, I don't, I don't think that statement captures the complexity of, of the sources of water that flowed to the creek.
So you disagree with the general statement that the source of Strawberry Creek are the springs that issue from the side of Strawberry Peak?
Objection asked and answered.
Um, yeah, I'm gonna sustain that objection. Ms. Doty, I, I think he testified pretty darn clearly about what his belief is of the sources, so I, I don't know that it's productive for you to try to characterize parts of that, unless you have some follow-up question. He basically said there are a variety of sources, including springs, so if, if you have a follow-up to that, go ahead, but I, I don't want you to mischaracterize what he said.
Okay, so Mr. Nichols is one of the sources of Strawberry Creek, the springs that issue from the side of Strawberry Peak?
Objection asked and answered.
No, I'm gonna overrule that objection.
Um, I, I, I wouldn't necessarily characterize any springs that's flowing from the side of Strawberry Peak, um, unless, of course, we're considering the whole mountain to be Strawberry Peak. And, and again, I, 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 I don't have a framework to, to speak to that specific language.
Do you know of any springs on Strawberry Peak between, uh, fifty-four hundred feet and, uh, and five thousand fifty feet above sea level that you would describe as flowing regularly in late summer?
Um, I haven't looked at that area of Strawberry Peak, um, and I don't have any opinion with regards to springs up in, on Strawberry Peak.
Okay. Okay, would you describe any springs that you've observed, or areas that you've observed, um, in the vicinity, vicinity of the pipeline as deep-seated springs?
If I'm to take from that, uh, from that description, the, the meaning that springs that are, that exist year-round, yes.
Which ones?
Spring Four and the spring area at ten, eleven, twelve.
Any others?
There may be others, but, but those are the two that come to mind.
Well, any, there, there's a finite number that are at issue in, in this hearing, so if you could just focus on those, would you describe any of the other springs that your work has looked in, into for this hearing, is deep-seated?
I, I described the springs that I would describe as deep-seated.
Okay. And would you describe flow today in the upper part of Strawberry Canyon, so above ten and eleven, twelve, as fairly regular, especially during late summer?
Um, it's variable, highly variable.
So would you describe it as fairly regular, especially during late summer?
Objection asked and answered.
I'm gonna sustain that objection. He responded by saying it's highly variable, and I think you asked the exact same question, so unless you have some clarification you wanna ask him about, I think he's given you his answer, so you need to move on.
So do you think that fairly regular is different than highly variable?
I don't have a framework to evaluate what fairly regular means.
So what do you mean by highly variable?
That means the flows are, are large at times and small at other times.
Okay, you mentioned developed infrastructure in your earlier testimony in response to one of Mr. Petrazelli's questions about, um, the, the Row documents, and can you tell me what infrastructure, um, you, uh, considered to be in place when Mr. Rowe was doing his study around nineteen thirty along the pipeline?
Well, certainly, he references to a, to an intake that existed in nineteen twenty-nine, and then, beginning in the fall or late summer of nineteen thirty, he describes development of Tunnel Two.
And to what depth?
Uh, to what depth?
Was any sort of infrastructure drilled into the side of the mountain?
Uh, I don't recall a reference to depth.
Would you anticipate that there was a tunnel drill, a borehole, or a tunnel in nineteen thirty that he was discussing at Site Two, Spring Two?
He referred to construction of it at Spring, at, at Spring Two.
And do you know what depth that was?
In nineteen thirty?
Objection asked and answered.
Um, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna overrule that. I, I, maybe we can cut through this pretty quickly. Um, Mr. Nichols, is it your understanding that when Tunnel Two was developed in nineteen thirty, it was developed to the depth that it exists to today?
To the extent of my knowledge.
To the extent of your knowledge, yes.
You're right, to the extent of my knowledge, it's, it's been this depth since it was developed. I don't know of any other depths or modifications to it.
All right, Ms. Doty, I think, I think you've covered that. I think you can move on.
Okay, if we could, um, put up PT nine, um, at page eleven, and I'm moving on to the random ones now, so we're getting close to the end.
All right, PT nine. Excuse me, did you say page eleven?
Yes.
All right. What was that? Oh, I'm sorry, PT nine. Okay, so PT nine. All right, we have PT nine, page eleven on the screen, which has a heading, Spring Tunnel Two. Please ask your question.
Sorry, my PT nine has a different eleven. I mean, PDF page eleven?
Okay, do you, do you have a slide number, or do you know? 'Cause I don't, I think these were PDF page numbers were the same.
I'm sorry, I said PT, I meant to say, um, BTB nine, page eleven, that's my error, I apologize.
Okay, that's where I was before. So we'll get up BTB nine, which is Mr. Nichols' slide, and we'll go to page eleven.
Okay, so do you recognize, I mean, this is your slide, so I assume you recognize the photo. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and this is the Forest Service pipe diversion point?
Yes.
Okay, did you check this pipe to see if there had been any collapse in the pipe or failure of the pipe?
We probed it.
And did you find any collapse or failure of the pipe?
What we found is that we could only get into the pipe about twenty-eight feet. And be, beyond that, it, it, uh, wasn't accessible.
And is it your assumption, then, that it had one time been longer than twenty-eight feet?
We don't know.
Okay. And when you were performing your shut-in test, that it involved this Forest Service point of diversion, did you look for discharge anywhere else along the side of the, uh, mountain, or did you just observe the end of the pipe?
We did look for flow around, uh, the, the pipe location and in the, the creek channel below it.
Okay, um, and did you, sorry, if we could flip to page thirteen really quickly?
I'm just gonna ask, Mr. Nichols, did you see any flow in the area around this pipe?
In, in particular, that, that borehole would hold, um, just a few, uh, pounds of pressure, and so, uh, amounting to approximately six feet of head. And the area around the borehole is wet, and the, and the channel below the borehole is also wet. And so, in doing this test, we monitored pressure at the borehole, and we monitored flow conditions in the channel below the borehole.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Doty.
Did you do any sampling of the geologic material near the Forest Service pipe?
No.
So, I believe at one point, and I'm asking you this to clarify, so please tell me if I mischaracterized what you said, but I believe that you had said that the extent of your knowledge regarding the boreholes that were, and, and tunnels that were drilled or dug before you began working with BTB and its predecessors, was drawn from the Dames and Moore reports. Is that correct?
That in the well completion reports.
And is that the universe of knowledge that you're, you're drawing those, um, that information about the, the links and construction of the pipes from?
I, I don't have a framework for the universe of knowledge.
But you're a universe of knowledge.
The information that I used or have access to, had access to, um, during my work, is the, the material that's included in the Dames and Moore report, and also the, the well completion, uh, records for each of the boreholes.
And did you include?
Excuse me, Mr. Nichols, I think you also mentioned in nineteen ninety-eight Hydro Megamix Report, is that correct?
Uh, no, I, I, I haven't relied on that, and I, I don't know specifically what information it contains regarding the boreholes.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Go ahead, Ms. Doty.
And we don't have any evidence, I don't believe, well completion reports for each of the, uh, boreholes, is that correct?
We do.
We do, okay, um, and uh, BTB nine, page, um, six, please? So just to confirm, this chart was constructed from the information in Dames and Moore, and then the well completion reports that are in evidence, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then my final question is, have you received any texts or items during your testimony?
I haven't.
Okay, and then, that completes my, um, cross. I would just like to ask to move SOS two seventy-two into evidence, please.
Um, okay, um, is there any objection to SOS two seventy-two coming into evidence? Ms. Gray, please go ahead.
I object. We did not lay a foundation for the entirety of the document. There were only, uh, questions asked regarding a couple of the entries about which Mr. Nichols testified. He believed they looked similar to comments that he received, but there is no um, establishment of the veracity of the document, no identification of the source of the document. And to the extent he testified, I think the language that, uh, Ms. Doty cited for purposes of asking questions is already in the written record of the testimony.
All right, and, and not only that, it clearly is hearsay. Um, I'm going to allow.
Hey, sorry, Mr. Lilly, may I respond to that, though?
Go ahead.
Objection. Um, this is a business record. It was obtained from the Forest Service. It's per, it's created during the ordinary course of business, so I, I don't, I believe there's a hearsay objection that applies.
I don't believe anybody has offered any US Forest Service declaration or source of the document.
All right, let's, first of all, we don't need to spend a lot of time on this. This concerns the hydrologic model, which we've decided we're not going to accept into evidence, so I'm going to allow exhibit SOS two seventy-two into evidence, but only for the very. So I'm going to allow exhibit SOS 272 into evidence, but only for the very limited purpose of being able to illustrate the questions, the cross-examination questions that Ms. Doughty asked Mr. Nichols about that exhibit yesterday. And to the extent he expressed or demonstrated knowledge about those particular provisions, I think it's admissible for that limited purpose, but not for any other purpose. So go ahead, Ms. Gray.
To the extent that was about back and forth of the model, and we've excluded that topic, I again have to question, what would the relevance be of including this in the record other than cause confusion?
Well, it's just for the, it's for the context. I agree, it probably has limited relevance, but I think it has enough that I'm going to admit it for that limited purpose only. So we haven't strucken, stricken Mr. Nichols' testimony about the modeling. So it's coming in for that limited purpose. I, I think, unless Ms. Doughty, you have anything else, I think it can come in for that limited purpose, and we can move on. I don't see that it's going to be hugely relevant to the hearing issues here. But I'm going to let it in simply because otherwise there's a gap in Mr. Nichols' testimony that refers to that. So Ms. Doughty, go ahead.
May we, so because it was an impeachment exhibit, I'm prepared to provide a foundation. I do believe it goes to a greater, it goes to more than just the model because it was the Forest Service addressing the entirety of the report that's been, I assume will be offered into evidence, which is BGB 7. So I think it goes to the credibility of the witness and of the data included in the report, although I believe we're prepared to offer it in sur rebuttal, so as long as we're allowed that opportunity later, then.
At this point, there is not an adequate foundation for any other purpose beyond what I've described. If, if you want to try to establish that foundation on sur rebuttal, you may. And we can potentially allow it for a broader purpose, but they, there, there, there just was no additional foundation beyond what I've allowed it for.
Thank you.
So, all right, with that, thank you, Ms. Doughty, and thank you, Mr. Nichols, for your, your testimony. We will now, we haven't, we've been going a little less than an hour. Ms. Belenki, you're, first of all, Ms. Mall, you may take down exhibit BTB 9. Thank you. And Ms. Belenki, you're up next. You've heard Ms. Doughty's Cross X yesterday and today. And of course, my rulings on the various motions. Do you have an estimate for how long you think your Cross X is going to take this afternoon?
I would say less than half an hour.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. What?
Less than half an hour.
Okay, less than half an hour?
I believe.
Okay, and if you can get a little closer to your microphone, I think it's voice activated, and I'm not hearing you very well. And if I'm not hearing you very well, the court reporter's not hearing you very well. We want to hear you. So I'm going to go ahead and, yeah, that's better. Thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and and ask you to get started, and we'll, we'll see where we are after half an hour. As I say, as I've said for all the other instances, please try to ask questions that focus on specific passages of the exhibits. And please try to keep, have your questions be short and succinct. So with that, you may proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols, I did try to call my questions so that they're not overlapping. There may be a little bit of overlap. I'm trying to limit that. Going to BTB 6, page 2, paragraph 4. I think we could put that up.
Okay, we'll put up exhibit BTB 6, page 2, paragraph 4, and just we're putting up BTB 6 revised. Go ahead, and we'll click paragraph 4 bigger and go ahead, read a question.
Okay, well, this is to set up the question. It says that you reviewed geographic log, geologic logs and geologic reports. And then at BTB 614, in paragraph 14.
Wait, 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 wait. You have to, you have to let us scroll to the page. So first of, stop there. Wait, Ms. Mall, stop there. So, and I'm sorry if I, if I was telling you to rush, but we do have to understand what you're asking a question about. So I think your question here concerns the sentence at line, it starts at line 12. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't write down all of the line numbers.
Okay, well, it's on, can you see it on the screen now?
Yes, on page 12, you say, "The available geographic data and reports." Geologic data and reports. There's, no, there's another place where it's.
Wait, wait, wait.
It's above there.
Wait, wait.
Line 9. I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead, but read the whole sentence if you're going to read it.
I'm just, I'm really trying to ask a very simple question.
Okay.
On line 9, it says you reviewed geologic reports and borehole geologic logs. The second part of my question requires us to go to page 14, paragraph 48.
We'll go to page 14.
I will try to find the line. I believe it's line. There's lithographic logs. Oh, it's on page, line 25. You refer to lithographic logs. Are these the same as the geologic logs mentioned in paragraph 4?
They are.
Um. I want to just make sure, this has been asked to some extent. I want to make sure we're all clear. The logs, the geologic logs are, you stated previously, are the, taken from the drilling completion reports, which those are in attachment 1 of BTB 7. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Did you only, rely only on those drilling reports? Or for the geologic, these are the only geologic logs or lithographic logs that you relied on? Is that correct?
Objection, relied on for what?
For his testimony?
Okay, so let's, I'll just help you, Ms. Belenki. So, Mr. Nichols, are these the only lithologic logs of the two tunnels and 10 boreholes that you discussed in the report that you're relying on?
That's not my question.
All right, well, go ahead then, try again. But you're, I just sustained the objection, so go ahead and restate the question.
In BTB 6, on page 13. Can we go there, please?
Okay, we'll go to page 13.
There's a section labeled Observation of Horizontal Boreholes.
Okay, can you tell us what paragraph number or line number you're at?
It's the actual section. It's called Geologic Observation of Horizontal Boreholes.
All right, so then what's your question?
My question refers to this section. Did you rely only on the drilling reports for this section of your testimony?
So in particular, for the, for the 10 horizontal boreholes, the, the drilling reports give us the lithologic or geologic information regarding where those boreholes were drilled and completed. That's one of the sources. The other sources are the, the Morton and Miller maps, map and accompanying document, and also the Dibley map.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. The what map?
Dibley.
Oh, Dibley, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to move to page BTB 6, page 15. There's a section entitled Geologic Observation of Tunnels. In paragraph 50, this is still, I'm just establishing the background. You say that there are drawings showing the length of the tunnels, which are at BTB 7, figures 10 and 11. We looked at those with the prosecution team. I just wanted, is that correct? We looked at those two figures.
I believe that.
Objection.
Okay, and we can look at them.
I, I'm going to overrule the objection. I think Ms. Belenki is just trying to establish some background. So, Mr. Nichols, if you remember testifying about those figures yesterday, fine, and if we need to, we'll pull them up. I don't know whether Ms. Belenki is going to ask a detailed question or just a background question. Go ahead, Ms. Belenki.
In, in particular.
Go ahead, Mr. Nichols.
In, in particular, my recollection is that we looked at tunnel drawings that I believe were in the Dames and Moore report rather than the BTB 7, figures 10 and 11, although those drawings share some, a common, you know, common set of origin.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Belenki. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Nichols.
I guess I have a follow-up then on, just on that point. Were the tunnel drawings, the tunnel drawings at figures 10 and 11 in BTB 7, how were those obtained?
Those were obtained from Blue Triton records.
You did not prepare them.
Well, we I, I obtained the raw drawings from Blue Triton records, and then, of course, inserted those into our document framework. And, and so we prepared them, but the original drawing is, is, is much older.
Okay, thank you. Going to paragraph 51. On, it's just down this page, if we could scroll down. And again, I'm just going to make a background statement first, and then I'll ask you a question. This describes your examination of the tunnels. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is, are the statements here based solely on your personal observations of the tunnels?
They are.
Are there any notes or drawings of your observations?
No.
Are there any photographs of your observations?
I may have photographs. I, I may have photographs, but that's, but I'm, but I'm not certain.
Are any of those photographs in the record?
No.
When you performed these inspections, were there any other people also inspecting the tunnels?
I, I, I would have been in the tunnel with a representative of Blue Triton's predecessor. My first inspection of the tunnels was in 2001. Don't recall particularly who might have been present.
And on other occasions, were you alone, or were there other people who joined you on those inspections?
We typically don't go in the tunnels alone. There was, there was always somebody with me.
And to the best of your knowledge, are there any notes or drawings by other people who were with you during those inspections?
Not that I know of.
Thank you. Is there any geological, geologic mapping for Tunnel 2?
And I would have to distinguish between the subsurface and and the superficial geologic mapping. Certainly, the Morton and Miller and the Dibley maps include the area of the surface where Tunnel 2 is located.
And the subsurface?
In, well, of course, the, the geologic maps address the surface. Subsurface observations would have been made by me within the tunnel.
You testified that you did not have any notes or drawings from those observations.
Correct.
Okay, so the only thing in the record as far as the geologic mapping for Tunnel 2 would be Morton and Miller or the Dibley. Is that correct?
Of this, correct.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask you basically the same questions for Tunnel 3. Is there geologic mapping for Tunnel 3?
The answers will be the same. Tunnel 3 is also within the area covered by the Morton and Miller and Dibley maps. And my observations within the tunnel are, are, are similar.
Thank you. Um. Are there any other geologic reports that you reviewed in preparing your testimony?
Not in preparing my testimony, no.
Are there other geologic reports you reviewed in preparing BTB 7?
Of, of course, I, I have had access to to the Dames and Moore report. And I, I didn't rely on any content in that report that I can recall specifically. But of, of course, it, it described similar geology. And, and that, that was a reference that was available to me as I prepared BTB 7.
And when we say the Dames and Moore report, when you say the Dames and Moore report, I believe there was more than one. Do you know what year?
I, I believe the, the primary report is the one that we looked at. It might have been yesterday, and I think it's 1999.
Thank you. Okay. And other than the two maps that you've mentioned previously, the Morton and Miller and the Dibley maps, did you rely on any other surface geologic reports or information?
No.
I'm going to turn now to the stable isotope analysis. And I think we could pull up BTB 7, page 15.
All right, we will do that. We have BTB 7, PDF page 15. And we're down to section 3.2.3.1, which is headed Stable Isotope Analysis.
I only have one question that relates to this general section, but were there any control samples taken?
The, the simple answer is no, but from the perspective of the isotope analyses, there's, there's not a way to collect a control sample that, that is isolated from the, the atmosphere relative to our study area. In, in particular, these isotope data, each, each sample becomes a control for the elevation that it's, that it's collected at. And then the isotopic signature changes depending on the temperature of the storm and, and elevation that the sample is collected. So I, I, I'm sorry to go on so long, but, but the, the answer is no. The controls are really represented by the global meteoric waterline that you saw plotted, I think, on the graphic that we looked at yesterday.
Sorry, you had, Mr. Nichols, you broke up on that. You have to repeat that sentence. I couldn't hear it.
So, so the, the, the closest thing to a control sample is, is represented by the global meteoric waterline that's plotted on the figure that includes the isotopic data.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to move to BTB 7, page 74. Page seventy-four. And this should be figure seven, which I believe we looked at briefly before. Nichols, did you prepare figure seven?
Um. Certainly, staff that I'm responsible for prepared it. Um, I don't recall if I, if I personally prepared the graph or if I had staff do. But I'm responsible for it, yes.
But you don't remember whether you prepared it or someone else prepared it?
Objection, relevance.
Um, I, I'm gonna overrule. Go ahead and answer.
I don't recall whether I prepared it personally or whether I directed staff to prepare it.
Okay, thank you. On this graph, there are, um, there's just a little background. There are two different shapes. There's the precipitation, which is a um. Angle and then the springs, which are blue dot. Or the spring samples. Is there, where did you take the spring samples?
These represent the tunnels and boreholes.
So you took them from the, it's, is, could you be a little bit more explicit? Where specifically did you take them?
From the, from the pipe discharging from each borehole and from each tunnel.
And did you take any spring samples at spring orifices?
No, because typically uh the atmosphere is effectively contaminant in this type of sampling. And so if we sample water that's exposed to the atmosphere, we will get today's isotopic signature rather than uh the isotopic signature that the, that the formation is yielding.
Thank you. Um, the, for the precipitation, I think, can we go to the page before seventy-three?
Go up one page. We have BTB seven PDF page seventy-three on the screen.
Is, and maybe, yeah, a little bit smaller. So there are five uh squares and lines with dots. Are these the five sampling sites that you used?
For the precipitation samples, yes.
Let me just, sorry, I lost my document. Here we go, um. Um, so when, I'm gonna now ask a question that goes between this and the figure below it, which we've just looked at. Is there any information that shows which data point in the figure seven is from which sample location that is shown on, um, I guess this is figure six perhaps?
Will you scroll up to the figure number?
Sorry, I can't see it. I'm trying to do it.
The other direction, I think.
So I, I can re-ask that.
If, if you would, please.
Okay. Is there any data or information on figure six or figure seven that would allow the observer to know which data point is represented on figure seven? That, I'm sorry, I'm getting my, I have to start that sentence again. Is there information showing which data point on figure seven is from which location on figure six?
There is not, and the reason for that is uh the purpose of the, the plot that we see on figure seven was to show the relative position of the, the borehole and tunnel discharge to the whole body of precipitation samples.
The information that would, do you have information that would allow you to reconstruct which of the data points on figure seven came from which of the locations on figure six?
I, I do have the information and, and once again, I'll note that the purpose of figure seven was to show the isotopic signature of the borehole and tunnel water relative to the whole distribution of precipitation samples. So the purpose of the figure was not to identify each of the, each of these sample locations, but rather the whole group of precipitation samples against the, the uh, the borehole and tunnel discharges.
And um my, the same question, I guess we should go back to figure seven. Can we just go down one? Or the springs that are represented here, is there any information in the record that could show us which of the springs identified by blue dots is which?
I- in, the answer is really the same. That there's not information in the record, but again, the purpose of this plot was to show the, the distribution of those waters relative to the distribution of precipitation samples. So it's a relatively simple plot, just showing um the relationship between all precipitation and all tunnel and borehole discharges.
Thank you. I am to try and make sure. I'm done. I think I'm done with that issue. I have several other questions. If we could go back to BTB six at paragraph. Um, well, I have page three. All the paragraphs. Oh, it's statement number six, so paragraph six. And you please, um. In the second sentence, it begins with hydrologic testing conducted. Do you see that?
Yes.
And which hydrologic testing are you referring to there?
And, and Ms. Blanke, just so we're clear, that the word actually there is hydraulic.
Hydraulics.
And there is a difference, so.
Looking at it. I'm looking at the right word, but I said it.
Yeah, please restate your question in terms of hydraulic testing.
Okay. Which hydraulic testing are you referring to in the second sentence of paragraph six?
The testing conducted at boreholes one, one A and eight and the force service point of diversion.
It's, is that the same as the shut-in test?
That was, that was, yes, that was one of the shut-in tests.
Um. In the third sentence, you um. Can you read this third sentence? Uh. It appears to provide a conclusion.
Beginning with geologic characteristics, is that the?
That's right.
Geologic characteristics of the fractured granite aquifer combined with the topographic relationship between the two locations precludes.
Stop!
Sorry.
Start at the beginning, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Take it from the top, seventy-five percent speed, Mr. Nichols.
Understood. Geologic characteristics of the fractured granite aquifer combined with the topographic relationship between the two locations precludes the hydraulic influence generated by the boreholes from reaching the USFS POD approximately one hundred and fifty-seven feet in elevation above the boreholes.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry. I, I'd like to ask you some questions about that sentence. When you say geologic characteristics, what are you referring to specifically?
In, in, in particular, the, the, the principle here is the rock will not contain the pressure and the rock is sufficiently fractured that uh it wouldn't contain the pressure necessary to drive the water table up one hundred and fifty-seven feet. So I'm referring to the fabric of the rock as well as the fractures.
So the rock and the fractures.
Yes.
Then I just have one more, more question on that issue. Um. You do mention the elevation, which is the hundred and fifty-five, seven feet. How much of a factor was the difference in elevation in your conclusion?
Well, the difference in elevation helps us understand how much pressure would have to be generated to push the water table up that high. And of course, we know how much pressure was generated at the boreholes during shut-in and that it's less than that number.
Um. Which is less than which? Could you just be more explicit?
Certainly, less, the, the pressure generated during shut-in was less than that required to drive the water table up one hundred and fifty-seven feet.
And, um. In the time, and how long was the, the test that you performed?
There was three different shut-in tests at one, one A and eight. And uh, I, I, I believe, I don't recall who, who I discussed that with earlier, but seven months, I think, was the longest. And then there were two subsequent test periods uh following that.
And they were for shorter periods of time?
I, I don't recall the exact length, um, but I believe that, that one of them was six months and I, and I don't recall third, but, but uh m- many months in length.
The shut-in lasted six months.
Yes, it, it, and again, I would refer you to BTB seven. There were three shut-in cycles. And um they lasted six to seven months.
Several weeks. That's why I'm, I'm a little confused, but I'll have to go back and double-check those. All right, let me just see. Those are all my questions.
Well, thank you, Ms. Blanke. Um, this is going to be a good time for a break, but before we take our break, I'm going to ask Ms. Frye, Ms. Frye, are you there? Somewhere?
Yes, I, I'm here.
There you are. Okay. Um, so have you had a chance to refine the cross-examination questions based on my
Right here.
Suggestions? How long do you think your questions will take?
Hmm, maybe thirty minutes, maybe?
Okay.
I've crossed off a few, so, okay.
Well, it's a lot of it's how short the questions can be rather than how many, but thank you. And Mr. Lo, do you still plan to conduct cross-ex?
Yes.
And have you had a chance to refine your questions?
Yes, I took some out that were specifically related to the model and to the um paired basin studies and um I would say maybe fifty minutes now instead of an hour.
Okay, five zero minutes?
Yes.
All right, so we will take our break. Uh, this is our normal afternoon break. It's tw- two twenty-seven. Let's come back at at two forty-five. And we will start with um Ms. Frye's cross-examination questions. And as a reminder, don't log off, but uh you may turn off your camera and your microphone. We'll be back at two forty-five. Thank you.
Steve Lo, mute. I'm on mute. See you later.
Objection, Ms. State's testimony?
Um, I'm gonna overrule that. I think Mr. Nichols can either say yes, that is correct, or clarify if it is not.
Of course, with regards to the boreholes, the, the geologic records from the drilling of those boreholes gives us a, a record of the, of the materials penetrated during drilling. With regards to the tunnels, of course, I went inside the tunnels and looked at the geological formation where it's exposed.
Were you present when the boreholes were drilled?
No.
Can we have BT 7117? That should be the drilling logs.
Hmm. BTB 7, page 117.
Yeah.
We have that on the screen.
Okay. Um, so are these the drilling logs that you use to determine the subsurface materials?
At the borehole locations, yes.
Okay. Can we scroll down? Um, and I want to find the signature. I think it's on, maybe there's, may be down two pages, I think.
Now, let's go to the next page, BTB 8, page seven, excuse me, exhibit seven, page 118. There's a signature down at the bottom.
Okay, there's a signature. Um, were these um, drilling logs uh, completed by licensed ge- geologist?
Um, I don't know whether they were or not.
Is there a stamp?
There's not a stamp that I know of on that document.
So professional geologists, licensed geologist stamp? Professional papers?
Objection, is there a question?
Is that true?
Ms., I think Ms. Frye has already testified. There's no professional geol- geologist stamp on this. Go ahead.
What, what are water drillers, wha- how are they licensed in California? Do you have to be a geologist?
Just, just, just leave it at that. How are drillers licensed in California, if, if you know, Mr. Nichols?
They're, they're licensed as a contractor with specialty in constructing water wells.
Okay. Are they geologists?
They may be, but not necessarily.
So was this person a geologist that did?
Objection, asked and answered.
No, I'm, I'm gonna overrule that. I think this is a different question. He, he may not know, but go ahead answer if you can, Mr. Nichols.
I don't know whether Gene P. Nelson was a geologist or not.
So you based your geological analysis of subsurface materials on documents that were not produced by licensed professional geologists?
I based my assessment of subsurface geological conditions on the best records available uh, describing those conditions.
But you did not run your own test or core sampling?
Objection, Ms. State's the testimony.
I, I think, uh, Ms. Frye, you can probably move on. He's, he's already said that he didn't do any of his own boring.
Okay.
And he's explained that he relied on these, what are called well drillers' logs, is, is the title, uh, for that information. So I think you've covered that point and you should move on.
Okay. Is a borehole a tunnel?
A borehole is not a tunnel.
Okay. Can we go to BT 6, page 5, uh, paragraph 15?
All right, we have BTB exhibit 6, page 5, paragraph 15 on the screen.
Did an attorney advise you on your interpretation of the Code of Federal Regul- Regulations Title 21 for bottled water?
I was not advised by an attorney with regards to the Code of Federal, Federal Regulations for bottled water.
Have you read this code? I believe it's 165. Does it say percolating groundwater? Yeah, I'm gonna sustain that, Ms. Frye. His testimony reads what it is. He refers to percolating groundwater in the first sentence of that paragraph and and then talks about the CFR in the third sentence. I think you've really mischaracterized it. And anyway, we can all read it, so I think it's best for you to move on.
Okay. Does the code mention water collection from tunnels?
Objection, where in the code are we referring to? Do you want to put something on the screen?
So I think, Ms. Frye, is your question, does twenty-one CFR, part one six five point one one zero refer to tunnels, is that your question?
Right.
Okay, so that's just, Mr. Nichols, you can answer that question.
You know, I don't recall specifically without without reviewing the document. It's been some time since I've looked at part one sixty-five.
I had to cross out some words. Okay. So let's see, would you agree that there is no surface expression today at Rose Spring sites one, two, three, and the streams flowing from spring two and three as described in the road documents?
Objection, compound.
Yeah, why don't you split it up, Ms. Frye? I think your question's gonna be easier to follow if you split it into parts. So just asking first, is there a surface expression at spring sites two and three, and then ask different questions after that, if that's what you want to do? Is that what your first question is?
Okay. Can you answer that?
Okay, so Mr. Nichols, the first question is, is there any surface water expression at spring sites two and three?
Not that I know of.
Is there a stream flowing anymore from two and three as described in Row?
Objection, miss characterizes evidence in the record.
So just, I'm gonna sustain, yeah, no, I'm gonna sustain the objection, we don't need to pull it up. Ms. Frye, just just ask him, is there a stream flowing from spring two or spring three today? Go ahead, Mr. Nichols, you can answer that question.
No.
All right, you may move on.
Okay. BTB six, page four. Let's see. Is line thirteen, okay. Okay, line eleven. So, okay. So when you're conducting the careful hydrological testing collections at the boreholes and comparing them to Row, what number do you use for the surface expression today?
Objection, misstated the word hydraulic, and I'm not following from line eleven where the statement is regarding Row.
Okay, so Ms. Frye, I think it might be better if you rephrase.
Okay, so I guess we could start at line eight.
Okay, Ms. Frye, wait, wait, Ms. Frye. When I talk, please let me talk before you start talking again. That will make things go more clearly. So go ahead and ask your next question.
Okay, can I just ask him to read this, starting at line eight, paragraph ten, to himself then?
Yeah, you can have him read it to himself, or you can have him read it out loud, just ask him to do one of the other.
Yeah, whatever you choose.
No, no, you, you.
You can just read it to yourself. I think we can read it long.
I've read it.
Okay. So do you, so you state, do you say that the boreholes at the sites that Row described are, have, let me think about this. So is, we already said that. So do you can say that Blue Triton's boreholes to divert water has no effect on surface expression at the sites that Row described? So is, we already said that. So do you can say that Blue Triton's boreholes to divert water has no effect on surface expression at the sites that Row described?
I, I, I don't make a relation between the current water collection at boreholes relative to locations that Row described. I don't have specific locations for for the things that he described.
But you're saying that your boreholes, that the Blue Triton boreholes have no effect on surface expression?
I, the the second sentence says that water collection from the boreholes does not have a measurable effect on current surface water expression.
Can you explain what that means? You compared in the first sentence, it says compared.
Wait, wait, Ms. Frye, stop. If you want to ask him to explain what that means, just ask him to explain what that means and then stop and let him answer. And by that, you might need to explain what you mean by that.
If you're comparing the hydrological conditions reported by Row to Blue Triton's boreholes and surface expression, can you explain how, when Row has measurable surface expression, and now the pipes are blocking the surface expression, now that has no effect?
Objection, Miss State's facts and evidence.
I, I, I have to sustain that objection.
Okay.
Ms. Frye, I, I, I'm not sure there's a, I mean, this says what it says, I'm not sure. There's a whole lot you can ask him about this that's gonna get you any more information.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. Let me see. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yeah, I'm gonna finish.
All right, thank you, Ms. Frye. All right, so Mr. Low, you're up next. It's three oh one, there you are, please go ahead with your questions.
Could I have about five minutes to organize so that I'll be efficient?
Okay. We'll, we'll go ahead and everybody can take a quick break, we'll come back at three oh six.
Thank you.
All right, we're back. Mr. Low, if you can just move your camera a little bit, there we go, so we can see you. It's three oh six, you may begin your cross-examination questions.
Okay, thank you. Could I have exhibit BT six and BT seven ready in case we need them?
Yeah, trust me, they're ready.
Okay, great.
Ms. Mullen keeps them open, just minimize, so she's ready to open as soon as we need them. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nichols, for talking with me on the field trip. It was real important to help me learn. And I appreciated you doing that, and I really respect hydrogeologists.
Objection.
Yeah, it's okay, Ms. Grady, just wrap it up and get with your question. So, Mr. Low, I do appreciate you wanting to show gratitude, but we, we have to get to questions here.
Okay, well, I have a lot of respect for hydrogeologists after working on the tunnel project for so many years, so thank you.
Okay, go ahead with your questions, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Nichols, I read your resume and I read your what you submitted as your qualifications, and they're quite good.
Wait, 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 Mr. Low, really get to questions. I really, really mean it, you have to ask questions.
Okay. Okay. Is most of the work that you do groundwater work?
The majority of my work is groundwater work.
Yes, and you're considered a groundwater expert, right?
I have testified as an expert in groundwater related matters.
Your firm has surface water experts as well, correct? In the Forest Service, we call them hydrologists or watershed managers.
We do have surface water experts as well, yes.
Okay, in order to understand the rebuttal testimony, I need to ask you a few questions to help me understand. And some of these, we talked about.
Mr. Low, just get to your questions, please. Just ask your questions.
Okay. In your testimony and on the field trip, we talked about the complexity of fractured rock aquifers. Is that correct?
I, I, I don't recall specifically touching on that topic, but I agree they're, they're complex.
Do you remember that we talked about how hard it makes it to predict effects and flows with a fractured rock system as we have here?
Objection.
Okay.
No, just, I, I think, Mr. Low, rather than referring to the field trip, just ask him, is it hard to determine water flows in fractured rock aquifers? Is that what you want to ask?
Yes.
Then just ask him that.
Okay. Is it hard?
It, it depends on the degree of fracturing. The more fractured a, an aquifer becomes, the more it behaves like a porous media. But where the fracturing is relatively widely spaced, then it becomes difficult to predict some of the, some of the hydraulic relationships that that exist within the aquifer.
Okay, and in this case, this is pretty widely spaced fractures. Correct?
I, I wouldn't characterize these fractures as as widely spaced. When we look at outcrops in the canyon, for instance, in the above highway eighteen on Strawberry Peak, we can see that fractures are a few inches apart from one another to to a few feet apart from one another, and that's, that's what I would describe as intensive fracturing.
Is it all intensive fracturing?
The fracturing isn't uniform throughout the, throughout the system. Certainly where faults cut through the canyon, the fracturing can be more intensive.
Okay. In, in, in one point in your testimony, and I believe it was also in your BT seven, you spoke about these fractures can fill and move and dry up depending on the height of the water in the fractures, and whole new fractures can be watered at that time, correct?
Objection, Miss State's testimony.
I'm gonna overrule that, I think Mr. Nichols can stay with or not that, that's what he said before.
I, I think in, in general terms, Mr. Low, you know, a concept that I relate is the fact that not all of the fractures are saturated all of the time, in that that's certainly true.
Okay. And you've, you've said that the Forest Service doesn't agree with all of the statements, conclusions in BT seven, correct?
I don't know about explicit statements of agreement or disagreement. Certainly, there's ongoing technical discussions regarding the report.
Right, but they haven't approved your conclusions.
Objection, beyond the scope. We've excluded this issue this morning.
Yeah, Mr. Low, I'm going to sustain the objection. I think you need to move on.
Okay.
Whether the Forest Service has approved the report or not, isn't, I don't think that's relevant to what we're doing here. I'm not seeing a relevance.
Okay. Do you know how much water was being collected when we observed the estimated 70 gallons per minute that Larry Lawrence told us was being released?
Objection, vague.
Excuse me, Mr. Low, you mean during the field, the site visit?
Yes, on the site visit, I'm sorry. On the site visit, Mr. Lawrence said there was approximately 70 gallons per minute being released. And I'm asking, do we know if there was more being collected than was being released, or was that the total amount being collected?
I don't know.
Do you agree that a significant amount of the water that's feeding the springs and your current boreholes comes from the other side of the mountain?
I don't know about the term significant, but certainly there's a contribution from what we would call the area behind the peak.
And I think you depicted it in a map. It's fairly large, goes all the way down to Rim Forest and over the mountain there as well, correct? Anything that's elevationally above the spring collection points potentially is running into the springs, correct?
Objection, compound. I'm not quite sure where the question went on that one.
I'm going to overrule the objection. Answer it if you can, Mr. Nichols.
Certainly, and I don't know exactly which map you're referring to, Mr. Low, but as a basic hydrologic principle, we know water's not flowing up to the boreholes. So that limits the area that, you know, that might contribute water flow to the boreholes as that elevation and above.
Okay, yeah, you did show it on-
Wait, 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 don't say what he said, just ask your next question, please.
I'm sorry, I'm having to weed out some of the modeling questions.
Okay.
Mr. Nichols, you folks provided the row information early in the process, and I'm wondering why you didn't include that in your updated BT7, which was updated, I think, February, early February.
Objection. Why you didn't conclude that? The question is vague.
I'll help you, Mr. Low. I'm going to sustain the objection. I'm going to ask the question for you. Mr. Nichols, why did you not include any discussion of the row papers in your update of your report, which is exhibit BTP7?
There was only one purpose for that update. In particular, the earlier version of the report had draft maps included in Attachment 3. And what we did is we went through and did a QAQC review of those maps and finalized them. And then we reissued the report. I think the date was February 11th or 12th. We reissued the report with a new Attachment 3, with the finalized maps. And then there was a couple of other figures that were affected by that review, and those were also replaced. And so, in particular, the purpose of that update wasn't to go back and do new analysis. It was to ensure that the maps included in Attachment 3 were suitable and representative.
Thanks. Mr. Nichols, after looking at the row papers, you and I had talked a little bit about this earlier.
Objection.
Yeah, Mr. Low, I'm really trying hard here, but you have to ask questions, not make statements. So please just ask a question.
Did you notice in the row papers and the row flow figures, pre-development and post-development, the connection between spring number two and spring number four?
Objection to flow figures? I'm not sure what's being referred to here.
All right, I'll help here. Mr. Nichols, do you recall that any of the row papers discuss any kind of hydraulic or hydrologic connection between spring two and spring four?
I don't specifically recall a reference to that.
All right, Mr. Low, you may proceed.
Did you look closely at the pre-development and post-development row flows for the upper springs?
Objection, Vegas to row flows.
I'm going to overrule that objection. Go ahead, answer if you can, Mr. Nichols.
My understanding of the flow measurements presented in the Rome documents was that they spanned a period from about September of 1930 until about April of 1931, in that that is essentially concurrent with or shortly after development of the upper water sources, particularly Tonnit 2.
Okay. So you didn't notice then that there was July 3rd measurements, pre-development for all of the springs, 1, 2, 3, and 4?
Objection. What document are we referring to?
Yeah, Mr. Low, why don't you just ask him, does he remember whether any of the row papers discuss flow measurements on July 3rd? And I don't know what year you're talking about, but-
In 1930.
Okay, so ask him that, or I will ask him that, just to move this along. Mr. Nichols, do you recall whether any of the row papers discuss measurements of flows from the springs on July 3rd, 1930?
I don't recall that in any of the reports, and I don't specifically recall whether that was in field notes or not.
Okay, Mr. Low, you may move on.
Okay. Earlier in your testimony, you said that you're taking Rose's work at face value, and that there may be, I think you said it's-
Wait, 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 you're doing it again.
I'm sorry.
Either ask us and we'll put up a page, and we can point to it, but you have to put it in terms of a question.
I'm sorry. Did you say earlier in your testimony that you were taking Rose's work at face value?
Yes, I believe I said something to the effect that I haven't verified his work or performed other validation of it, but that I would review the documents at face value, yes.
Okay, and did you say something about a challenge of the validity?
I don't have a challenge to the validity, but I also haven't validated the documents.
Okay, thanks. And I think you said earlier in your testimony that you haven't read all of the row documents, is that correct?
I read all of the row documents that I know of in the record. I'm not certain if I've seen every single one that's in the record, and we can talk about exhibit numbers, I suppose.
No, I just was wondering why you hadn't read them all.
Wait, 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 wait. Wait, Mr. Low, that's not, number one, that's not a question. Number two, that's not what he said. So please go on with your next question.
Okay, I'm sorry. Springs that come from fractured, are springs that come from fractured bedrock still considered springs?
Yes.
So if they're not in a buried alluvial channel, they're still considered springs, correct?
Correct. Springs occur where the water table intersects the ground surface, regardless of the geological material that they're in.
So do you agree that these are all natural springs, 1, 2, 3, 4, 8, 7, 10, 11, and 12?
That was a lot of spring numbers, and I don't have an opinion with regards to some of those. I can't say definitively, in particular, I don't know how many you just named, but some of those I don't know of a surface expression, and I can't, you know, make a definitive statement with regards to whether or not it's a natural spring.
The tunnels and boreholes that have been developed weren't just randomly developed into the side of the mountain, were they?
I don't believe that the development was random.
You don't believe what?
I don't believe that development was random.
Right. And it wasn't based on any geological studies, was it?
I don't know what it was based on.
Are you familiar with other boreholes and tunnels that were developed in those early years, from, say, 1930 to 1945?
I am familiar with what, I don't know about that date range, but I am familiar with other tunnels throughout Southern California that were developed for water supply.
Okay. In those cases, they were all developed at springs, at least the bedrock ones were at springs, correct?
I don't have specific knowledge about why or where tunnels were located in that time period, 1930 to 1945. I assume they had some indication that that they would be able to obtain water there, but I don't know what the indication was that they were looking at.
Okay. In this case, based on the row information, do we know what they were looking at?
Objection, assumes validity of, basically, he's asking him to verify hearsay about which he's already testified. He was not there to validate.
I'm going to sustain the objection. Mr. Low, I think you're going to be asking Mr. Nichols to speculate, but I'll allow you to ask him one question, and he can either answer it or not, and that is, does he know why they located the tunnels and boreholes where they did? Is that what you want to ask him? Or not?
Yes, based on his experience.
Okay, okay, let's just do this. Mr. Nichols, based on your experience and all of your work in this matter, do you know why Blue Triton's predecessors located the tunnels and boreholes where they did?
I don't have specific knowledge with regards to what surface indicators they used to cite those features.
All right, so, Mr. Low, I think that answers your question. I think you can move on.
Do you think it's obvious that there were natural springs there that were visible at the time?
I don't know of the specific locations of those features, but certainly Mr. Rowe referred to a series of springs.
Based on your experience with spring developments, aren't most tunnels and boreholes developed by exposing the cracks where water's coming from?
When we're talking about a fractured formation, fractured rock formation, the intent of the tunnel or borehole would be to intersect fractures and to interconnect fractures to produce water.
And trying to connect to those that are producing the water at the time, right?
Okay. Go ahead and answer that if you can.
Presumably.
All right, so, Mr. Low, I think you've covered this pretty well. Unless you think there's something you've missed, I recommend you move on.
Okay, just a couple more real quick things. Mr. Nichols, you showed the drawings of the tunnels and where the flows were coming in on the tunnels?
What is your question?
Would you call those tunnels streams? Would you call, where the water's coming into those tunnels, would you call those streams?
Objection, vague and compound.
Let's do this. I think it would really help to put up one of the figures he was talking about, and then you can ask the question. So if we can find the pictures of the tunnels, let's put up, Ms. Mullen, please put up exhibit BTP7 PDF.
78 is one of them.
Hi, Mr. Well, which would you like to ask about, Tunnel 2 or Tunnel 3?
I think it was Tunnel 2 that had the three places where the water was coming in.
Okay, we have, go back one page, Ms. Mullen, thank you. Okay, and I don't know if we can-
This is good, this is-
Yeah, okay, so we have exhibit BTP7 page 77, which is titled Tunnel 2 drawing. So ask your question about this drawing.
Okay. Mr. Nichols, you said in the narrative that this drawing reflected the three locations where water was flowing into the tunnel. Is that correct?
I don't recall specifically that narrative, but the water inflow points are indicated on the drawing.
Correct. So would you call those spring streams, would you call that a stream of water coming in?
Objection, that was compound. Which question are you asking?
Would you call these inflow points, natural inflow points, would you call them streams, a stream of water?
An objection.
Okay, wait, wait, wait. Yeah, yeah, the objection is sustained. Mr. Low, either ask him what he called these streams, or we call them streams of water. It's confusing to ask both.
Would you call these a stream of water?
No.
What would you call them?
I would call them water inflow locations. In the water flowing into the tunnel at these locations, part of it up wells. in, in the water flowing into the tunnel at, at these locations, part of it up wells, um, from the floor. Um, and then, and then part of it, uh, seeps from the, from the side part of the tunnel.
The intent of this tunnel was to intercept the water that was flowing to the surface, correct?
I don't have specific knowledge of whether or not they were trying to intercept water flowing to the surface. Certainly, they were trying to develop a water source.
Didn't you say, though, that it, they didn't just randomly dig into the mountain?
Objection, Ms. States.
I'm gonna sustain the objection. Uh, Mr. Low, I, I, I think you're starting to get to argue with him. I mean, he's answering your question, so just move on.
Okay, thank you.
With another question.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Nichols, um, remember the con- do you remember the conversation we had earlier in your testimony?
Objection.
No, no, that's letting, it did start out, do you remember, which sounds like a question. So, let him ask the question and then you can decide whether or not to object.
Do you remember our earlier conversations regarding using USGS topo maps to determine whether a stream was intermittent or perennial?
Objection, the conversations is the part that I'm struggling with.
All right. So, Mr. Low, I, I, I think that, I think you can ask the question, but it's, do you remember testifying that is probably what you wanna ask?
Yes, do you remember? Well, testifying that in some of the rebuttal testimonies the last day or two?
O- okay, tr- try again. Do you, I think what you're trying to ask him is, do you remember testifying that? And then something about USGS topographic maps. So, try to formulate a question in that, in that format.
Do you remember, well, okay, yes. Do you remember the prosecution team talking about using USGS topo maps?
Okay, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna just restate it. I'll, I'll try to help move on. Mr. Nichols, do you remember the prosecution team asking you questions about the conventions for depicting various water features in USGS topographic maps?
I'll, I'll have to admit, it's, it's been a couple days. I don't recall talking about conventions for mapping features on USGS topo maps.
I, I, and I'm sorry, I, I probably misstated it. I, I think it was that the prosecution team witness testified about that, so I'll try again. And I don't know whether you were listening or not. Do you remember hearing a prosecution team witness talking about conventions for water depictions on USGS topographic maps?
I, I do recall some testimony to that effect.
All right. With that foundation, Mr. Low, you may ask your next question.
Thank you. Did you also use USG, GS topo maps as part of your proof for conditions being the same today as they were earlier?
Objection, proof of what conditions? It's very, it's very broad.
Yeah, I'm gonna sustain the objection. I think it's argumentative. So, Mr. Low, I, I think, I'll, let me try asking a question and maybe we can get through this. So, Mr. Nichols, did, in your analysis of the comparison of the condition, the hydrologic conditions described by Mr. Rowe with the conditions you and your team observed when you were in the field, did you look at various topographic maps of the area and their depictions of hydrologic features?
I have looked at, at topographic maps of the area and, and the depictions of hydrologic features on those maps. But my assessment of conditions in Strawberry Canyon is based on our fieldwork.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Mr. Low, you may move on.
Okay, could we go to BTB two, page oh, five, three?
Wait, are you sure? You mean BTB?
Oh, BTB seven, I'm sorry, oh, five, three.
Okay, we'll put up exhibit BTB seven, page zero, five, three. And that's a PDF. Okay, and you want us to look at the last paragraph?
Yes, can you make it bigger?
Yeah, we will. We'll scroll down and Miss Mullen will scroll down. There we go. All right, we, the last paragraph begins in the lower reaches of Strawberry Creek.
It's actually the previous paragraph?
All right. But that paragraph begins, the upper reaches of Strawberry Creek, so.
Right.
Ask him if you, excuse me, Mr. It's, excuse me, Mr. Low, when I'm talking, please let me finish talking.
I'm sorry.
Ask him whether or not you wanted to read it out loud or to himself. Ask him either, please read that out loud, or please read that to yourself. That's your next question.
Okay, could you read the last sentence of that paragraph that starts out the intermittent stream?
Okay, and I, I'm gonna just ask you, Mr. Nichols, just please read that out loud.
The intermittent stream conditions observed in the steep upper reaches above Waterman Fault are consistent with conditions shown on USGS topographic maps published beginning in nineteen oh one.
All right. So, Mr. Low, what is your question?
Since you've used this several times, do you often refer your clients to USGS topographic maps to determine whether there's surface water or not?
I don't.
Do you believe that the historical topographic maps, even the recent topographic maps, really depict, uh, accurately where there is surface water in the middle of summer, late summer, and not?
They do not typically.
The, to determine that takes pretty intensive surveys at the right time of year, correct?
Objection, to, to determine what?
To determine perennial flows.
Uh, okay, all right. I, I, I mean, I think the question is pretty obvious, but I'll, I'll help you, Mr. Low. So, Mr. Nichols, to determine whether or not there are surface water flows in a stream at a particular time, is it necessary to do fieldwork and observations of that stream?
I- i- it is, and it's important to have multiple observations per year.
All right, Mr. Low, please proceed.
Thank you. And to be considered a perennial stream, it needs to flow year round, correct?
That's correct.
So, using the GS, USGS maps and other things, you've concluded that um, Strawberry Creek is an intermittent stream, correct?
Objection, Ms. State's testimony.
Um, so, Mr. Low, I, I think what you're getting at, the first sentence of this paragraph states, the upper reaches of Strawberry Creek, of the Strawberry Creek watershed have intermittent surface water above the northern strand of the Waterman Fault. I mean, it, it says that. So, what is, what is your question for Mr. Nichols?
In other places, you've also said that and said that it, it agreed with Rowe determination that the stream was an intermittent stream, is that correct?
The, the information that, um, that I understand from Mr. Rowe, of course, he describes a system where flow does not always make it all the way down the canyon, and that would be consistent with an intermittent stream.
Can you tell me any other place where Rowe said above the Arrowhead Hotel intake that was intermittent prior to development of the springs?
Um, well, there's, there's certainly other indications. We have to go back through the documents to, to identify them, but he made at least one statement that in nineteen twenty-nine, water didn't make it down to the, to the intake.
How far is that intake from the springs that, that we're concerned with here that have been developed?
I don't know the exact distance, but it's, it's gonna be more than a mile, mile and a half.
So, does it having no flow at that location make Strawberry Creek an intermittent stream, or does each reach need to be looked at to determine whether they're intermittent or not?
I- in particular, the, the entire stream would be characterized as intermittent. If flow doesn't make it all the way down, but to the extent that individual reaches might be perennial or intermittent, that's a, that's a different classification.
Okay, thanks. You concluded based on the one pizometer at the only wet location that you had for the Forest Service Spring that there wasn't a connection to spring one, one A and eight, correct?
No, wait, wait, Mr. Low. I, 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 I'm not even, I'm not gonna, Miss Brady, you don't need to object. That, that clearly mistakes his testimony. His testimony was not based on the pizometer alone. It was primarily based on the shut-in test at those boreholes.
Correct. Yeah, I, I didn't mean to misstate it, I'm sorry. Let me restate it. You concluded, did you conclude that the spring development at one, one A and eight did not affect Forest Service Spring above?
My conclusion was that there's not a hydraulic relationship, a direct hydraulic relationship between the boreholes one, one A and eight, and the forest service point of diversion, and the surface water expression around that area.
Okay. And that was based on the inability to drive water uphill, correct? That distance uphill?
Partially, yes.
Could it be possible that one of the boreholes intercepted a fracture that normally didn't daylight to the uh, to the stream?
Given the nature of the geologic formation between boreholes one, one A and eight and the forest service point of diversion, there's a sufficient number of fractures that the formation wouldn't hold what we would call confining pressure in a, at, i- i- in terms of a confined aquifer. And so, that, that, that formation would have to hold, um, more pressure than the rock matrix can withstand uh, for it to drive that water level up. And so, to your hypothetical about a single fracture, you know, potentially connecting the two, um, that fracture would have to be completely sealed like a pipe, uh, to connect boreholes one, one A and eight to the forest service point of diversion. And fractures like that just don't exist in this, in this environment. And if it did, the pressure is great enough that it would break the rock.
Okay. I'm almost done. Let me look real quick here and make sure that I haven't forgot anything. Okay, you mentioned one of the reasons that, uh, Forest Service Spring might not be producing what it used to produce is horse, historical wells in the Rim Forest area, which in one case you said, I think drilled down, uh, even below the spring locations. So, what, oh, sh- sorry, i- is that correct? Is that, did I read that correctly?
Um, but i- if, if I may just correct the, the, the statement there a bit, um, one of the potential reasons that, uh, flow may have reduced at the forest service point of diversion would be wells in the Rim Forest area. Um, and in particular, uh, we don't know exactly why or if flow has been reduced at that location because there hasn't been flow measurements from nineteen thirty-six until two thousand sixteen. And I'll, I'll add that the one well that's, that extends deeper than the water collection infrastructure is located closer to tunnel three. It's on the crest line side of the canyon, and it extends, uh, some distance below the elevation of tunnel three.
A- and is it still being used that you know?
To the extent of my knowledge, it was, it was relatively recently drilled well. I, I believe it was in the early two thousands. Um, but I, I haven't looked for recordation records for that well or anything like that. I believe it's at an active facility, though.
You believe it's what?
I bel- I believe it's at an active facility. I think it's, uh, it's at a camp with a, with a lake up there and things.
Okay. So, help me understand, or can you help me understand how that well may be affecting the Forest Service Spring? And yet, the removal of forty thousand gallons from the headwaters, I mean, forty, forty million gallons of water a year is not affecting how you know that it's not affecting uh, the Forest Service Spring and downstream?
Certainly. And so, with regards to that well in particular, the one that I referenced, that's, that's closer to tunnel three, um, I, I don't know that it has a direct hydrologic influence on the Forest Service Spring. There were wells over in the Rim Forest area that were closer to the Forest Service Spring. But as we, uh, as we discussed earlier, uh, in your questioning, there is an area behind the peak that contributes water to the upper, uh, water collection facilities. And to the extent that there is some flow, we would, we would call it, uh, uh, underflow coming, you know, through the fractured rock from the other side of the mountain. Um, any wells that also tap that particular flow would reduce flow to the Forest Service, um, point of diversion or be in, and the surrounding surface water expression. With regards to the water collected at Blue Triton boreholes, those boreholes are located at a lower elevation than the Forest Service, um, point of diversion. And so, to, to use an analogy, just like, just like water pouring off your roof through the rain spout, you can't really push water back up through the rain spout to the roof. And so, the Forest Service, the Forest Service point of diversion would, would be the first point to be affected by any pumping uh, that happened in the community above. But then, that effect might extend further down the canyon as well.
Okay, thank you. I think I'm done.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Low.
Thank you.
So, we can, Miss Mullen, take down that exhibit, at least temporarily. Um, so, does anybody else have cross-examination questions uh, from Mr. Nichols? Um, and I'm gonna ask the court reporter, we're almost to four o'clock. Do you wanna? And I'm gonna ask the court reporter, we're almost to four o'clock. Do you want a break or we may, we may go all the way to five o'clock. So I, I'm not gonna ask you because I know court reporters never want to slow down the proceedings if they don't have to. But let's just go ahead and take an eight-minute break until uh, four o'clock and then we will proceed. I do have some questions from Mr. Nichols, so we'll start with them at, at four o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly.
I appreciate and admire your ability to take this all down, so thank you. All right. Just wait a moment for a couple more people to get up on the screen. What, I'm gonna go ahead and get started. Um, so good afternoon, Mr. Nichols. Um, I do have a question, a couple of follow-up questions. Uh, first of all, um, in response to Mr. Low's questions earlier this afternoon, uh, you mentioned that there was, that it was apparent that there's, I think you were, that you used the word intense fracturing in the bedrock formations above the highway that we saw during the site visit. Do you remember saying that?
I do.
And I, I think you said intense, I'm trying, I wrote this down on the order of fractures being a few inches to a few feet apart. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. And my question is, based on your knowledge of the area, do you think that there is the same level of intense fracturing in bedrock formations near Tunnel 3?
Um, I, I, I don't know specifically. It's, it's at least that intense in potentially locally more intense.
Okay. And what about, I'm gonna ask the same question for each of the other sites. What about at Tunnel 2?
Uh, my answer would be the same is it's potentially, uh, more intensely fractured, um, but at least as fractured as, as I stated.
All right. And what about at the borehole 1, 1A, 8 complex?
It, it, it's, it's harder to tell, uh, in the subsurface because we, we just have the borehole, uh, lithologic logs. But, uh, it's, it's also gonna be intensely fractured.
All right. And then what about over at the Tunnel 7 and the boreholes 7 and 7A, B and C complex?
Uh, again, it'll be intensely fractured rock.
And by the way, I don't know if we asked this before. Can you still get into Tunnel 7?
I- 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 it can be entered. Um, we don't do it. Um, um, but, but the, but there is a door there. It's sometimes blocked with debris and things.
Have, have you ever been in there to look at the fractures under the ground?
I, I was in that, uh, in, inside that structure. Uh, again, it's been 20 years ago, I think. Um, in, in my recollection is it's lined with concrete, uh, overhead and on the walls and then there was gravel placed on the floor. And so there, there wasn't direct observation of, of fractures there. But we do know that that structure is located, um, just on the uphill side of a fault. Um, and, and of course the boreholes penetrate the area below that, that, that we know is fractured heavily.
So based on your knowledge and expertise, do you assume the same or more intense level of fracturing there as, as what we can see above the highway?
Yes.
All right. And then finally, and I realize your answer may be different for this because it's down lower. What, what, what is your opinion as to the degree of fracturing at the borehole 10, 11 and 12 complex?
I- i- it'll be similarly intense.
Right. Um, next question, this is one no one has asked and it's been bothering me, my curiosity, and I don't know whether you can answer it or not, but we've heard about historic springs 1 through 4, 7 and 8, and 10 through 12. Do you have any information about springs 5, 6 and 9, if they're ever worse that spring?
Um, in, in, and you'll have to forgive how, how loose my recollection, recollection is at this, but I, I think I saw a map once that I identified Spring 5. Um, and I, I wanna say it was in an adjacent canyon and I don't know of the others.
Adjacent meaning not in this, this part of, in this fork of Strawberry Creek?
I- i- in again, from recollection, I think it was in the east fork of Strawberry.
Okay. Well, I was just wondering. All right. So Ms. Mullen, if you could please put up exhibit BTB 6 and move to page 4. And go to the bottom of the page to paragraph 12. All right, so um, Mr. Nichols, the first sentence of paragraph 12 reads, "BTB and its predecessors and interests have collected water within Strawberry Canyon for more than 120 years for use in the production of bottled water products." Do you see that sentence?
Yes.
Um, and can you tell me, to the best of your information, what were the locations where Blue Triton's predecessors uh, collected water in, at, that you described here for more than 120 years?
Um, I, I, I don't know all of the locations. Um, it's my understanding, or, or I should, I, I should caveat my answer with the fact that in this sentence, I'm, I'm referred to the fact that Strawberry Canyon, of course, extends further than our study area and down towards the hotel property. And I, it's my understanding that they collected water, um, in Strawberry Canyon above the hotel property and that, um, I believe that they shared the intake with the hotel at, at some points. But I think others are, are, uh, maybe better informed on that topic than I am.
Okay, well, and that was my, my question. What, what information is your understanding based on?
Uh, really it's based on a discussion with members of, of my team. Uh, in, by my team, I mean the Blue Triton team.
Okay. So you, can you point to any particular documents referring to where those diversions might have been that, near the hotel from Lower Strawberry Canyon?
No, I can't.
All right. And if, Ms. Mullen, if you can move to page 6. Same exhibit and to paragraph 18, which is at the bottom of, whoops, that's page 5, yeah, page 6. Um, so Mr. Nichols, uh, I'm, I'm not gonna read this out loud and if you need to, uh, you can take a moment to read it to yourself. I think some other people have asked you about this. This paragraph uh, talks about the California, it starts out, the California Water Code establishes the SWRCB's permitting authority over streams, lakes, other bodies of water and subterranean streams flowing through known indefinite, through a known indefinite channel and cites California Water Code, section 1200 and then it goes on to talk, uh, discuss some reported court decisions. And it has bullet points of what is often called a, a four-part test for determining whether a a subterranean stream is present. Do you, do you recall this paragraph of your testimony?
Yes.
And who, I mean, obviously you said you're not an attorney and this paragraph has some legal citations in it. Who, who gave you uh, the information you used to prepare this paragraph?
Um, I'll, I'll say in particular, I, um, I have applied the four-part test in, on past projects and so I was familiar with it from that. With regards to the specific citations, uh, those were provided by one of the, one of the members of our legal team. And I, I don't recall precisely, uh, which member of the team it was, but, uh, one of the attorneys on the Blue Triton team.
All right. Well, that, I was gonna ask you, ooh, but if you don't remember, that's fine. Um, when, when that attorney, he or she, uh, get, provided you this information, did he or she say anything else about this four-part test for subterranean streams that you remember?
And, and no.
All right. So Ms. Mullen, please go to, uh, page 35 of exhibit, the same exhibit, BTB 6. And scroll to paragraph 115. And if you can, uh, read this paragraph to yourself and let me know when you have and if, and when you want, just ask us and we'll scroll to the next page.
I, I, I'm, I'm ready for the next page.
Okay, let's go on.
I'm, I'm ready.
Okay. So I'm gonna read the last sentence to you, which started on the previous page and continues here. "It is also clear that Strawberry Canyon had been developed as a water source prior to the studies conducted by Mr. Rowe. And the purpose of his studies was to characterize conditions responsible for the intermittent nature of that water supply." Uh, so this is really a follow-up to my prior question. When you say it is clear that Strawberry Canyon had been developed as a water source prior to the studies by Mr. Rowe, do you have anything more to add beyond what you previously said about there potentially may have been an intake near the, from Lower Strawberry Creek near the hotel?
I- i- in particular, Mr. Rowe refers to the hotel intake, which I believe was, uh, at his station or near his Station 39, which is, which is, uh, not in the lower portion of Strawberry Canyon, um, but it's closer to, uh, um, to our study area.
Okay. So is that what you were, is that the primary, uh, source you were, you're, you were thinking about when you wrote this, this part of the sentence about development prior to the studies of Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
All right. Let me move on. Oh, but while we're on that, and, and if you don't have any information other than what's in the row report, you can just say so. But do you know who developed that diversion?
Um, I, I believe he refers to it as the hotel intake. And, um, I'm, I'm not exactly clear on if the intake was shared at that point or not. Um, but I, but I think he refers to it as the hotel intake.
All right. I thank you. Uh, that, Ms. Mullen, that concludes my questions about exhibit BTB 6. So if you can move to BTB 7. And that's good. On the first page, just scroll down to the bottom of the page. Right there. Um, the last two lines say it's, the report is dated July 2021, updated 11 February 2022. And I, I think you may have already answered this in response to others' questions, but I, I believe you said that the change is from July 2021 to 11 February 2022. to 11 February 2022 in this report were to replace the drafts of the figures in attachment three and to update some of the other figures. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And there is a note of what the specific update was, I think at the end of the table of contents.
Okay. I didn't notice that. Oh, okay. Yes. Thank you. So let's go on, Ms. Mullen. Please go to page four of this PDF file and scroll down to the bottom. Okay. So is this a description of the changes you made from July 2021 to 11 February 2022?
It is.
All right. And, and this is describe all the changes you made?
Yes.
Thank you. I hadn't noticed that before. That is helpful. Um, all right. Let me just notes here. Okay. So Ms. Mullen, please go to PDF page 20. And this exhibit BTB seven. And scroll down to the middle of the page where there's a, a section headed tunnels two and three. That's good, right there. Uh, so Mr. Nichols, the first sentence here says tunnels two and three were advanced at spring sites. Um, can you tell us what you mean by the word advanced?
Um, the, by the word advanced, um, I mean that the tunnel was excavated horizontally into the hillside.
All right. And I, I'm not sure whether you've covered this before, but I, I just want to ask you uh, to answer this question if necessary, repeating yourself. Do you have any information regarding the physical or hydrological characteristics of these two spring sites before the tunnels were advanced at these sites?
I don't.
All right. Now, Ms. Mullen, if you could go to PDF page 26 of the same exhibit. And scroll to section 5.3.2.1. Um, the first, and this first paragraph here in this section, which begins Dames and Moore, 1999. Why, why don't you just read it to yourself quickly and let me, or as you need and let me know when you've read it?
I've read it.
Okay. And so this paragraph discusses a 24-hour test period that was conducted by Dames and Moore. Is that correct?
Yes.
Now, based on your knowledge of the hydrogeology of this site, would you expect to see any observable, uh, changes at the flow within 24 hours after these boreholes were shut in?
Based on my knowledge of the site, um, today, informed by studies conducted since that time, I wouldn't expect to see a response in 24 hours.
All right. And, and, and why is that?
Um, because during the, the shut-in testing that we conducted at Warhols 118, um, two of the boreholes at least took longer than that period of time to equilibrate. In, in, meaning that the, the pressure increase at those boreholes, um, extended over periods of days or weeks. And so you wouldn't necessarily exert the maximum influence within a 24-hour period.
Okay. And then Ms. Mullen, if you can scroll down so that at the top will have the paragraph which reads to further examine. Think we can, yeah, we can just fit those four paragraphs on there. So, um, Mr. Nichols, if, please take some time to read these paragraphs, which talk about the dye a tracer test. And then I'm just going to ask you a couple of questions about the dye tracer test.
Yeah, I've read the top two paragraphs.
Oh, I'm sorry. Read all four paragraphs.
I've read them.
All right. So as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, the, the dye was injected on September 22, uh, 2017. And, and just so I'm clear, at, at that point, were the boreholes shut in or not?
Once the dye was injected, then the boreholes were shut in.
Okay. And then it says they read, the boreholes remained shut in until 27 October 2017, following arrival of the dye at spring four. Does that mean the dye arrived on that date, October 27?
Um, I, I don't recall if it was on that date, but it was within, um, logistics considerations being we weren't able to get out there every single day. The dye may have arrived a few days earlier, but that's, that's approximately the date.
Okay. And based on your knowledge of the hydrogeology of this site, um, did you expect it would take over 30 days for this dye to arrive at spring four?
We, we didn't know how long it, it would take for that guy to arrive. Um, in, in partly informed by Dames and Moore's efforts to, to exert influence on that, on that pool. Um, we, we, we didn't have a, a preconceived notion about how long it would take.
Okay. Well, and based on your expertise, were you, were you surprised it took 30 days?
Um, uh, it, yeah, it, I, I guess so. It took longer than we might expect, considering it covered a horizontal distance of, of 130 feet or so.
Yeah. Well, that's what I was wondering. So do you have any opinion as to why it, it took 30 days?
What? Yes, I do.
What, and what is that opinion?
Um, yeah, well, well, frankly, the concentration of dye that we detected was very dilute. Um, in, in what this tells us is that there wasn't a direct slug of dye that went straight from the boreholes down to the spring four location. But rather the dye diffused, uh, locally at the, in the aquifer around the boreholes. And that the fringe of that diffusion area reached out to spring, uh, to spring four in that that diffusion effect takes longer than, let's say, a direct advective flow path. Which if it was a direct advective flow path, it would have shown up in, in a few days potentially.
Okay. And this is, correct me if I'm wrong. I'm trying to start to understand hydrogeology. But is this consistent with what you said earlier about the intense fracturing of the bedrock formation in this area?
It, it is. It is. If, if the fracturing was more, uh, focused and localized, we would expect the dye to show up sooner. The fact that the fracture network, as we understand it, is widespread means that we only saw a small fraction of the dye and it took quite a while to get there.
Okay. Um, so let's go on to the, the next page. This is PDF file page 27 of exhibit BTB seven. And the first sentence at the top of this page states, Dames and Moore, 1999, conducted a shut-in test at borehole seven, seven A, seven B and seven C that included alternately shutting in and turning out the horizontal boreholes and monitoring the flow rate from the old spring seven infiltration gallery, which was constructed at a spring site. Do you see that?
I do.
And so I'm going to ask the same question I asked about the, their other tunnels. Uh, do you have any information regarding the physical or hydrological characteristics of the, the spring site before the old spring seven infiltration gallery was constructed here?
I don't.
All right. So now moving down to the next paragraph, which below the heading of section 5.3.2.3. Um, this first sentence says, spring area 10, 11 and 12 has been developed using horizontal boreholes drilled at a location that is upgradient of a naturally occurring spring. Do you, do you see that?
Yes.
So let me, I'm sorry, just, oh. Okay. So first of all, do you have any information regarding the characteristics or hydrogeological characteristics of that naturally occurring string, spring before these boreholes were developed?
The, the naturally occurring spring, as I understand it, is the area, um, that are characterized as below the, the vault that we visited in the field where we saw flow, um, currently. So I don't have information describing a pre-development condition there. Um, but I only have my own observations of that, of that spring.
Okay. And then based on your own observations, do you have any opinion as to what the pre-development conditions were?
I don't.
All right. And now the, the, then in the next paragraph, the, I'm just going to read the, the last sentence, which says, transducer data show an approximately, an approximate three-day lag time between changes in shut-in turnout status and corresponding changes in water depth at the transducer location. Do you see that?
Yes.
And again, based on your expertise, um, it, did you expect a three-day lag time or did you expect something longer or shorter?
Um, again, I'd say I didn't have a, a direct expectation based on, uh, based on Dames and Moore's experience at, at the site. Uh, I, I expected it would be longer than 24 hours.
Okay. And just tell us why that is.
Uh, frankly, because they conducted a 24-hour test and weren't able to observe any changes.
Okay. All right. I'm going to go to page, or ask Ms. Mullen to go to page 55 of BTB seven. Um, so Mr. Nichols, the, in the second paragraph, which is right below the heading for section three, 8.3.3, um, this first sentence reads, although the hydraulic connection between boreholes 10, 11 and 12 and three adjacent springs has been demonstrated, the effect on surface water expression induced by the boreholes is too small to distinguish amidst seasonal and water level flow changes. Do you see that?
Yes.
And, and what I was wondering is here, your text refers to three adjacent springs where the, the sentence we just, um, read before, that I just read before and asked you about, referred to basically a spring site. So can you explain, there seems to be a, an inconsistency between whether there was one spring or three springs in this area?
Right, right. And, and frankly, I would, I would state that in that first sentence that that's a typo. That, um, I would say between boreholes 10, 11 and 12 and the adjacent springs. So it should be the instead of three.
The adjacent spring singular?
Uh, it, well, yes.
Okay. Um, and that's, all right. So let me just go forward. If Ms. Mullen, if you can go to page 58. That's, I think, you're, okay, good. And just scroll down a little bit for section 9.4. And again, and I'm not trying to be nitpicky here, but I guess I am being nitpicky. But again, here, the first sentence refers to three adjacent springs. So again, would you say that that's probably better stated as the adjacent spring?
Yes.
All right. All right. Just a moment here. All right. Let's go up, uh, Ms. Mullen, please take this exhibit down and put up exhibit BTB nine and go to page eight. All right. So Mr. Nichols, are you familiar with the geologic map that's shown on this slide?
Yes.
All right. And, and what is this geologic map?
So this geologic map was from, uh, prosecution team exhibit three, page 65. And it's an excerpt from a Morton and Miller map, um, produced in electronic format.
All right. So, and then Ms. Mullen, if you can go to exhibit BTB 19. Are you, and are you familiar with this geologic map, Mr. Nichols?
Uh, yes, if we could scroll to the, to the title block.
Yeah, yeah. This, go, scroll down to the bottom of the page. This is the Dibbly map, but go ahead, Ms. Mullins, please scroll down.
Yeah, it, it's the Dibbly map. I'm familiar with it.
Okay. It has so many megabytes, it doesn't scroll very fast, but if you're familiar with it, we'll scroll back up. But the, the question I have is, and I'm grappling with this. And if you need to flip back and forth between these two maps, please let us know. But I just could not find comparable geologic, or depictions of surface geology on these two maps for the same area, for the area around the springs. First of all, do you know if they have different depictions of that, of the geology in that area?
So the, the fundamental, um, geologic formations described by the two maps are similar. And what we see with the, with the Morton and Miller map is a finer differentiation of the different types of granite that occur in the canyon. Whereas, but I would, I would characterize the Dibbly map as, as lumping those granites together into a single formation.
All right. Um, and, and if you don't, I'm going to ask you this question. If you don't know the answer, I certainly understand it. Uh, Ms. Mullen, please put up exhibit BTB 20. It may take a minute. It's got a lot of megabytes. All right. So Mr. Nichols, this is a Morton and Miller map that was in your exhibits. Um, is, do you know if this is the Morton and Miller map that the prosecution relied on to prepare of this, the slide that, the, the map in the slide that you've, um, included as slide eight of BTB nine, or do you know whether that was from some other Morton and Miller map?
My, my understanding is that they are the same, um, geologic data. This map is essentially the PDF version of those data. Uh, whereas the, the map shown in the prosecution team exhibit is, is generated from, uh, I think the electronic files, uh, provided or obtainable from USGS.
Okay. So as far as you know, if we zoomed in to the proper part of this map, which covers a large area, it goes all the way, all the way to the ocean. That would be, it's the same, that basically fundamental geological data that's shown in this map and in your slide eight.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Um, all right. That's, those are all the questions I have. And we've completed everyone else's cross-examination. So I'll ask Blue Triton attorneys, I don't know whether it's Mr. Sanders or Ms. Grady, but are there, is what, does one of you want to ask redirect questions?
Um, Mr. Lilly, I, um, I will be asking the redirect. I would request, um, because of the extensive amount of cross-examination that we, I know it's, um, I, I don't want to waste a half an hour of your time, but I would request that we, um, postpone this until first thing tomorrow morning so that we can make sure that all of our questions. so that we can make sure that all of our questions are appropriate and have adequate citations to the record. Like I said, there was extensive questions by the prosecution team of in excess of four hours, as well as.
You don't need to argue, I get it.
It was a lot of time, and I didn't mean it. It was just a lot of questions and a lot of material for us to provide redirect as well.
Yeah, yeah, and that's fine. The reason I'm cutting you off is you don't have to justify it. I think that, considering we're already past 4:30. The only thing I ask is, since I'm going to give you until tomorrow morning to prepare, and obviously I know you'll do this, but please try to hone and refine your questions so that they can, you know, have the citations and be succinct, and that'll help us move along faster tomorrow morning.
We will do that. Thank you.
All right, and then, before we sign off for today, I just want to talk about what else we need to do tomorrow. Check my notes here. I feel like I'm giving out homework assignments, maybe even to myself. So, a couple of things. I do want to talk tomorrow about the AHO staff exhibits, which I described yesterday, and we have posted to the FTP folder a list of them, and that references the folders. They're also in the AHO FTP folder that contain those exhibits. So I'm going to, wanting to offer those into evidence tomorrow and ask if there are any objections and rule on those. And then, Ms. Doty, I'm going to say, I did spend a little time reading Story of Stuff Project's February 7, 2020 subpoena deuces Tecum. I think, in light of my ruling on the modeling, basically not accepting into evidence the discussion in Mr. Nichols' report about the modeling and the modeling results, I think that makes a lot of your request in your subpoena deuces Tecum moot. I think a lot of the other questions, as I've said, or all the other document requests, I'll just say, I would like you to evaluate those and refine them before I rule on whether or not to grant Blue Triton's motion. I mean, this can go on forever. I certainly understand that Blue Triton has not produced all the, I'll say, the raw data to support all the numbers in Exhibit 7, mainly Exhibit 7, maybe Exhibit 6 as well. And that's typical. So, I'm not going to, well, I'm only going to direct them to produce that raw data if you can explain to me why you really need it. And as I said before, I mean, for the modeling, it might have been a different story, but since the modeling is out, we're talking, a lot of it has to do with the Attachment 3 figures and some of the descriptions of the shut-in tests, and Mr. Nichols' testimony does go into some detail about that, so I really am going to need a justification for why, if you think that raw data is still necessary, why I should direct Blue Triton to produce it. And then, I think some of your other elements of your subpoena were for matters really relating to the Forest Service process. And unless, I mean, I'm not going to order Blue Triton to produce that unless you can really show a justification for why I should, why that really relates to what has been covered in this hearing, or to our hearing issues, as opposed to the the Forest Service process. So, let's do that. We'll plan to do that tomorrow as well, after we finish the testimony. And then I would like whoever is planning to offer surrebuttal to tell me, I think I'm going to ask this, I don't think there's a problem unless anybody tells me why. The name of the person who is going to offer the surrebuttal testimony and any related exhibits and the topics that that surrebuttal testimony will cover, and we may be able to get some ideas about the scope of that. We currently are scheduled to have that hearing start on April 27. I do know there was a request for some additional time for when those exhibits will be due, which we'll talk about tomorrow as well. I will note that you have had Mr. Nichols' report, I think it was filed on February 14, so you have had it for a while. It's not just number of days from this hearing, but for preparing surrebuttal, you have had quite a while, but I will consider that. I definitely do not want to change the hearing dates, but I may change the exhibit submission deadline, may move that back a little bit. So, those are the homework assignments I have for people to be prepared for tomorrow morning. I see two hands up, but I first want to ask, does anybody have anything else they think we need to cover tomorrow morning? All right, I'm not hearing anything else. So go ahead, Ms. Belenke, your hand is up. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I had two quick things. I have a conflict tomorrow afternoon after 1:30, so I just wanted to say that, and if you need this information about surrebuttal before then, hopefully we can get it in before that time, and also you said now that you will talk about a possible extension on the surrebuttal. I do want to say that even though now the issues may be somewhat limited because of what happened today with excluding certain parts of the testimony during this period that we had the full amount of the BTB rebuttal, we were looking at all of that, and so a lot of time went into issues that you've perhaps now excluded. So I do think that we would still like to have additional time before the actual testimony and exhibits need to be provided.
Okay, well, thank you, and I certainly have an interest in giving you enough time so you can refine your written proposed testimony so that it will go more smoothly. So we will discuss that tomorrow, and I don't think there's going to be any problem with the schedule conflict, unless Mr. Sanders has an unbelievable amount of redirect, which I sort of doubt he will. I don't think we're going to get into tomorrow afternoon. I think we're going to be able to wrap this up tomorrow morning. All right, so, Mr. Lowe, your hand is up. What is your, there you go, get back in the camera view and tell us your question or comment. And take your hand down, yeah.
I noticed, I mean, I heard you rule that we were going to not not discuss or worry about anymore the model, the comparison between the two watersheds, and, or three watersheds actually, and the adaptive management plan in general needs to also be watched for, because there's a lot of references to the adaptive management plan, and that again is a Forest Service process, that if we want to get into that, it makes a whole lot of difference. So I think we should include any reference to the adaptive management plan that helps form any conclusions should also be excluded.
All right, well, I'll tell you what, Mr. Lowe, your homework assignment then.
You stinker.
I feel like a teacher, I never was, but here I am. Make a list in writing with page numbers and line number citations and paragraphs as necessary of the part of references, I assume you're talking about primarily in Exhibits BTB 6 and 7.
Yes.
If you think there are references to the adaptive management plan that should be excluded, I'd like to have a written list, it'll just go a lot faster, so if you can make that list and email it to the AHO email address, either tonight or tomorrow before 9:00, and of course, include everyone as a C on the service list as a CC when you do that, and then we will cover that tomorrow as well. Oh, that is right, we do have to also handle tomorrow offering, I assume Mr. Sanders will offer the BTB rebuttal exhibits into evidence. We've had some ruling on BTB 6 and 7, but we will have to cover that as to whether or not there are any other objections to those exhibits as well.
Can I bond to that?
That will be the time for you to state your objections, but I do want them in writing if you think there are certain parts that should be not admitted into evidence. You have something else to say?
Well, what I was going to say on the adaptive management plan, I don't have any way, I've been trying to figure out a way to do search on these documents, and I can't find, I can't do word searches on it, so it would mean reading 800 pages and all of Mr. Nichols' testimony, again, to try to find every reference to adaptive management plan. But I would ask, can we do the same as we agreed to do on the others? If we notice something that seems to do that, then, you told, I believe, the prosecution team and others, that if they found something that did reference that, that we hadn't identified already, to let you know. So I would like, if we could, to do the same with this. There may not be any of these that are a problem, but if we find one that makes conclusions at all based on the adaptive management plan, that's a Forest Service plan, just like the others are, so that's all I'm asking.
Okay, it is different. It's not a model or a technical report, but let's consider that tomorrow. I frankly don't remember any discussions in BTB 6 or 7 about conclusions from the adaptive management plan. There may have been some references to it along the lines of, we did this study as required by the adaptive management plan, but I don't think that is going to be a problem, but
Right.
Let's, we'll look at that. You can bring that up tomorrow, and of course, Blue Triton's attorneys may respond to that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, so is there anything else for today? Seeing no hands, we will conclude a little bit early today, and we will plan to be back tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM. So everybody have a great afternoon and evening, and I'll see you all tomorrow. Goodbye.